The regular meeting of the San Fernando City Council and the successor agency to San Fernando, to the San Fernando redevelopment agency is called to order at 6:06 PM. Madam City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Montanaz.
Here.
Councilmember Ballin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Present.
Mayor Mendoza.
Present. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pleasure. Will everybody rise, please? Hand over your heart and begin.
For our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion and a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilmember Montanaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Ballin.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Yes.
Mayor Mendoza.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is decorum and order. Mr. City Attorney, please read the decorum and order.
If you don't mind, oh, I can do it, Rich, if you want, if that makes it easier on you.
It doesn't matter to me.
You actually, you sound, you sound beautiful, so we'll let you read it.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That's touching. This is the decorum and order admonition for the city of San Fernando. The city council, elected by the public, must be free to discuss issues confronting the city in an orderly environment. Public members attending city council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the city council as set forth in the San Fernando procedural manual. Any person making impertinent derogatory or signorous remarks or becomes voiceless while addressing the city council or while attending the city council meeting may be removed from the room if the providing officer so directs the sergeant of arms, and such person may be barred from further audience before the city council. That concludes the English language reading of the admonition. I believe the Spanish language version is next.
Decoro y orden. El consejo municipal elegido por el público debe tener la libertad de discutir los problemas que enfrenta la ciudad en un entorno ordenado. Los miembros del público que asistan a las reuniones del consejo municipal deberán atenerse a las mismas reglas de orden y decoro que se aplican al consejo municipal según el manual de procedimientos de San Fernando. Cualquier persona que haga comentarios despectivos o difamatorios impertinentes o que se vuelva agudiciosa mientras se dirige al consejo municipal o mientras asiste a la reunión del consejo municipal puede ser excluida de la sala si el funcionario que preside así se lo indicara al sargento de armas, y dicha persona puede ser excluida de futuras audiencias ante el consejo municipal.
The next item on the agenda is public statements, ma'am, Madam City Clerk. Are there any public statements this evening?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For public comments, there will be a three-minute limitation per each member of the audience who wishes to make comments relating to city business. Anyone wishing to speak, please fill out the blue form located at the council chamber's entrance and submit it to the city clerk. When addressing the city council, please speak into the microphone and voluntarily state your name and address. And the Spanish version, please.
Comentarios públicos. Hay un límite de tiempo de tres minutos por cada persona presente que quiera hacer comentarios relacionados con temas de la ciudad. Le pedimos a cada persona que quiera hablar que complete el formulario azul que se encuentra en la mesa de entrada y se lo entrega a la secretaria de la ciudad. Cuando se dirijan al consejo municipal, por favor, hablen al micrófono y digan su nombre y domicilio. Gracias.
This evening, we have no items on the consent calendar.
Before we go to that, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to remind council that last, at our last meeting, although we didn't get to this item, there was that public comment submitted by a local property owner related to the housing element. So that has been, I believe that was distributed, and we just want to note for the record that that, that public comment is part of this, this item that's being heard tonight.
Thank you. And we have no presentations on this agenda either. And so the next item is the administrative reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will pass it over to Kanika Keith, who will be doing our, leading our presentation tonight, and Robert Kane with Houzil Levine, our consultant on the housing element. So Kanika, go ahead and kick it off.
Mr. City Manager, may I make an announcement? Those who are joining through Zoom, please close your YouTube. There is a feedback coming through.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, member of the council. For this item, our consultant, Robert Kane from Houzil Levine, will give the presentation. As this is a study session, the presentation is broken down into four topics, and it will allow for the council to ask questions and discussion after each topic. I will now turn it over to Mr. Kane to give the presentation. Robert, can you share a screen?
Yes. Okay, can everybody see my screen now? Okay. Well, good evening. So tonight, as Kanika had mentioned, I'm going to give you a brief overview of where we are with the housing element and the public safety element. I'm going to start with a brief overview of where we started and where we've been and where we're going. Again, I'm the sole presenter tonight. So the consulting team consists of Houzil Levine, which I represent today. We're the lead consultant on the housing element and public safety element, update for the city of San Fernando. Veronica Tam Associates is our senior advisor for housing element, for the housing element, and Rincon is doing the public safety element and environmental justice, as well as the CEQA documentation. Unfortunately, Veronica from Veronica Tam Associates could not make it this evening, nor can, could Rima Chakra, the project manager for the Rincon Public Safety and Environmental Justice and CEQA effort. So I'm going to briefly, they provided me some, some bullet points, so I'm going to go over their, their topic areas. There may be questions tonight that I may not be able to answer. I will take those down and definitely get back to you once I confer with Rima and Veronica. So briefly, what is the study session going to overview? Like I mentioned previously, the housing element update, I'm going to talk about the potential, the identification of the potential opportunity sites and review some of the goals and policies that are drafted. I must note that we currently have just received comments back from the first draft, so we're still taking in input, and that's why it was so important they have the city council study session today so that we can incorporate what we hear from you this evening and also from the community and the planning commission into this next review, right? So this next review, we will resubmit all of our changes, and we have a list, and we can go through that if we have enough time. I can, I can kind of give you a brief overview of what the housing and community development ACD is looking for. With that being said, the study session will, first, we'll, we'll talk about the housing element update, a little bit about environmental justice, the public safety element update, and then a little bit about the CEQA process and the timeline there. So just to give you an overview of where we've been and what we've done thus far, this is a, a listing of all of the public engagement or outreach that we've done with the city. So we've had three virtual town halls, March, May, and August. We had multiple meetings with the technical advisory committee in April, May, and December, two planning commission meetings. We did a planning commission briefing back in May, and then a planning commission study session this past November. And then, of course, we're doing a study session today with the planning commission. Throughout the process, we've had a couple of online activities and also there are resources that are posted after every meeting in a questionnaire. We have a housing survey that we posted and made available, and it still is available on the city's website. MAP Social, which is a map-based commenting app where we asked the community to identify areas they thought were good areas for, for housing. And then, of course, we've, we've posted the draft documents and the meeting presentations and videos on the website. So with, with that, that said, let's move into the housing element update. So again, you've seen some of this, but what, real quickly, the housing element is one of the seven required elements of the general plan. It provides an assessment of the city's housing needs, sets citywide goals and policies for housing. It must be updated every eight years. This is actually the sixth cycle, so this is the sixth time that the housing element would have been updated. And it must be reviewed by ACD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, for compliance. And so we've already submitted a preliminary draft and received some, some, some comments back. What are the requirements of the, of the housing element? It must accommodate projected housing demand as mandated by the state, so that's the RENA, right? The Regional Housing Needs Allocation. It needs to increase housing production to meet this demand, preserve existing affordable units, improve the safety, quality, and condition of existing housing, and facilitate the development of housing for all income and housing types, including special needs population, and promote fair housing choices for all. So those are some of the key requirements of the housing element, what we focus most of our attention and, and policy craftsmanship on. So just a little bit about the housing needs, housing allocation. So this is just a summary of the performance thus far. So what you see here is the 2014 to 2021 RENA allocation. So on the previous housing cycle, there was a total of 217 units required. And you can see through the years, every year the city has to, through the planning, planning period, give an annual progress report, and so this is a tabulation of the, of the progress. And you can see in the far right-hand side, you can see the totals there. And, and the, the, the city did extremely well in meeting its low, moderate income housing types, right? So they, they didn't have any remaining RENA target. There was a remainder in the very low and the above moderate, but in general, the, the city did a very good job in meeting its RENA allocation. So with that being said, this is a six-cycle RENA allocation. You'll notice, the first thing you might notice, actually, is, is the increase, right? We are now at 1,795 units that need to be planned for in the next eight years. You'll see another, another number at the very bottom, which is 2,154. That's, and that is the 20% no net loss buffer that's recommended by, by the state. So the target should be around 2,154. So we need to plan for 2,154 units, broken down in these categories as, as listed here. So the city can claim credits for, for certain projects towards this planning period re allocation. And there was 19 units of entitled projects, so 19 housing units have already been taken credit of, and there are another 39 units of, under review. So there's projects under review that are, excuse me, waiting for, in the entitlement process, and so there's 39 units there that the city can take credits for. So that remains, a remaining need of 956 units. So here's a breakdown of the RENA allocation. And additionally, and I, actually, these are out of order, but let's talk about ADUs. So ADUs are very successful in the city of, of San Fernando, as you will know. And this is sort of the, the breakdown, well, this is the breakdown of the past couple of years, and they're averaging right around 64, 65 units per year. So we can take credits, the city can take credits for that on an annual basis through the eight-year planning period. So in this table here, we anticipated 800 units. We submitted to the HCD, and they came back and said that was a little bit aggressive. This, you know, the, after talking with staff, staff still assert, and we, and we think that the city is doing so much towards this that this is a very attainable goal. So we're in discussions currently with ACD on how we can justify those 800 units. So with that being said, we're assuming 800 units, and this is the breakdown of the remaining need. Actually, it's 937. I think I'm, I said 957, but actually, it's 937 is the remaining need. So what areas of the city are we looking at? So very early on in this process, we heard from the community and we heard from the technical advisor committee that they want that, the most important is to preserve your neighborhoods, your neighborhoods in San Fernando. So that, that sort of gave us the idea of focusing on, on, of course, the multifamily areas because we, we have capacity there, and then the specific plan areas, right? So looking at the specific plan areas and trying to not touch the, the single-family residential properties. There are of small lots, so there is, you know, outside of lot consolidation, there is a little capacity in that single-family residential district. So how did we go about identifying sites? And these are the characteristics, such as lot size, the year the, the structure is built, is that ready for redevelopment, the current land use, some improvement ratios, you know, identifying whether or not the improvements are undervalued of the property, so potential for improvements there, residual lot area, looking for specific plan areas that has like some specific opportunities. And one of the things that we had to take into account, and this is where the, how the safety element ties in, is looking at seismic hazard, FEMA flood risk, fire risk, and also evacuation risk. And this is particularly important when we're looking at higher density development. So those are all of the, the factors that we're taking into consideration for the sites inventory. And again, like I said, like I said previously, we try to focus on the corridors. So these are a lot of the specific plan areas, so the corridor specific plan areas. And you see here, the sites in green, those are the sites that we identified. Again, this is the, the properties along the McClay Corridor that are also identified and that we have designated as opportunity sites. And a little bit, because we couldn't accommodate everything in the specific plans, we applied a mixed-use overlay. So basically, in the C1 and C2 districts, we're applying or proposing a overlay that would introduce mixed use. So the ability to develop residential dwelling units on these properties. And you can see here the hashed marks over the, over the C1 and C2. That represents this overlay district. So with that being said, we're looking at these sites that we have identified yielding 1,268 potential units. So these are the sites that we've identified, and we've kind of identified the target income range for those, and that you can see that in the color code, where the oranges are the low income, the yellows are the moderate, and then exclusively above moderate income would be the blues. Now, of course, on these properties, above moderate income developments could occur. But we're trying to look at, because it's the most critical and there's, it's the most constrained characteristics to meet the low income. That's why we are trying to look at the most lower income as possible. So with that being said, so this is a breakdown of, and this is just a, an expansion of the, the table that we saw previously, where we're including the site capacity. And with our site capacity, we have a surplus of 331 units. So of the properties that we've identified, the parts we've identified, and what we estimate we could develop on those properties, what could be developed on those properties, we have a surplus of 331. So a little bit about the housing plan. So we've talked about the, the, the sites, and I wanted to get into a little bit of the housing plan. This is the goals and the policies and the programs that are going to implement the housing program. And it's around five key issue areas. Housing and neighborhood conditions, development of new affordable housing, tenant assistance, homeownership, and regulations. And this is pretty much just pulling over the, the goals that were in the previous housing element. And this is sort of the next set of slides. And so we went through those goals, and we looked at the programs and what, and we did a, an assessment, and that's part of the housing element towards the end, is an assessment of existing policies and programs and their performance. And we went through that analysis, and under goal one, we continued these three programs and discontinued one. And this is that CAP program that was discontinued. We can talk about that a little bit later, if you have any questions about why these were discontinued. And then in goal two, we have a continuing implementation of programs. Nothing was continued. Our assessment, the programs were still applicable, and they moved forward into this planning cycle. In goal, goal three, we had one voucher program that was discontinued by the, by the county. We continued the fair housing program, and we added new Section 8 rental subsidies and affirmatively further housing, which is a requirement, the AFFH is a requirement. You know, when I say AFFH, affirmatively furthering fair housing. Those are policies that are required new to this, this sixth cycle of housing element. For goal four, it stayed primarily the same. Goal four was about continuing the homeownership programs. These are the three programs that the city participates in, not, not exclusive, but these are the ones that we've identified as viable programs for the city to continue participation in. And then goal five, so this is really one of the, the bigger of the two, and this is where a lot of the new requirements fall. So in goal, goal five, these, this was a new, a new goal, and it, it was to reduce or remove governmental barriers where feasible and legally permissible, to reduce the cost of housing production and facilitate both ownership and rental opportunities for all residents. So you see, there's quite a few implementation programs that, that we're proposing in, in this. And a lot of this is actually requirements of this, this cycle, such as the density bonus, accessory dwelling units, lot consolidation by right approval of projects, and so forth. So a lot of these are requirements that are new to the six-cycle housing element. So that's sort of a, a quick summary. We're going to break here, and so I could answer any questions you have about the housing element. We can go back to some of the slides if, if we need to. And then after questions, we'll kind of move on to the, the safety element and environmental justice.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Robert, for the presentation. I had a few questions. Could you let me know more? How many people attended the town halls? Like, what does your community engagement in numbers look like thus far?
So the first two engagement exercises were online, so there was Facebook Live, and I believe we had around 65 people online, for, actually, averaged about 65 per meeting.
Oh, great. And you had like three meetings, right?
Yes, we did.
And how was your engagement with the online survey and map?
The, the map, we had about, we had about 50, we had 50 comments on the map, and the survey had 20, about 25 residents took that survey.
Nick, was the survey shared out through any of our other mediums or just available online?
We, I don't believe we sent a hard copy of it. We did have, and Robert, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there was a booth at one of the, the street fairs that we, the Saturday street fairs that we had the opportunity to, you know, for residents to fill out the, not only fill out the survey, but also engage with the online tool to put, you know, what they're preferred. So I know we had, go ahead, go ahead, Robert.
Oh, sorry, sorry, Nick. Yeah, we created some, some poster boards with some QR codes so that people could scan that and, and take the survey on their phone. We also had physical copies there. So I believe they were, they were posted at a couple of the events and at every town hall after the first one. The first one, we did not have that, that set up yet, but the survey has also been made available on the city's website throughout the process.
And we also, sorry, Councilmember Rodriguez, just real quick, we also sent out the email to all of our listservs. It's usually about, I think we have about 10,000 people we send that out to, so.
Yeah.
That was widely distributed via the city's email.
And we sent out a postcard, too, to everybody, right?
That's right. So we did send out a hard, a hard copy postcard.
Was everything available in Spanish as well?
Yes, the, the housing survey was available in Spanish. The instructions for the, for the map dot social, I believe, were in Spanish, but most of it, because it's a, a program, it didn't, it wasn't translatable. But, but the survey was, yes, the survey was in Spanish language. And there was a...
The town hall was bilingual?
Say it again?
The town hall was bilingual as well?
I, I can't, I can't confirm that. I, I was...
Yeah, I believe that they had, was there not someone that was translating? I think there was a, there was also a, I may be, sorry, I may be thinking of the parking master plan because they were going on at the same exact time. Actually, Jerry is, is on. Jerry, do you remember if there was, those were bilingual?
They were not bilingual, but I was available to translate for anybody that needed any type of translation.
And I guess I should take a step back and ask, what is the next steps for public engagement? And do you feel like we were able to reach, are they, did you want to reach more people? Is there ways that we can reach people?
Yeah, sure. So right now, so it's gone through its first initial review. We wanted to, instead, submit it to HCD so that we could see where we are, get a good bearing on, on what else we needed to do. We had a meeting with them, HCD, the analyst, last week. We got pretty positive feedback. We have some work to do, but they were very happy with the progress that, that we made. It is available for public comment. It'll be, you know, it'll be available for public comment up until the city council adopts it, right? So the, any, we welcome all feedback because we do want to hear from the community and, 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 and respond to, to those concerns. Yeah, so, yeah, so.
And I just, I don't know if there was a mechanism for capturing it, especially at the town halls, but if we understand, like, are they business owners? Are they residents? Especially, I think, as we, as you propose these opportunity sites, like doing outreach in the area, these additional opportunities to make sure we get engagement and feedback. I wanted to ask you a question about our RENA numbers.
Yeah, sure.
From what I understand, right, it's kind of an assigned number calculated by the state. What is utilized to produce that number?
So, so the state gives SCAG. So SCAG is the, is the regional EPO, the municipal planning organization that has purview over the five counties, right? So all the five counties here in Southern California. Well, I should say, Orange County, San Bernardino, Riverside Ventura, and LA. And they have a, a number that they allocate, and through a process of looking at demographics and population trends, they assign, right? They have a certain number that they have to allocate across the whole, whole, the whole region. So they distributed basically the fair share allotment for, for San Fernando.
So it's safe to assume that if we pulled up like our census numbers, it would match, like the percentage of people in specific income categories who might?
Yeah, I don't know exactly their calculation. There is a white paper that I could find for you and, and send to kind of give you, like, their methodology approach. It is on their SCAG website. I'd be happy to pull that up and find, I mean, I can't find it now, but I, I definitely could provide that for you if you're interested.
I am interested, and mostly just, I think, as we present to the community the concept of the housing element and what it means in practical terms. I think that if we can paint a fuller picture of kind of what San Fernando has now and what we expect we need, because, you know, we have a lot of families that do have ADUs, but they might not, you know, there might be a lot of families in those ADUs, and they might need more space, right? So the idea that those occupying it might be in this certain income level, and thus, we need more, more housing development so we can meet the need of our own community.
Right, exactly. And, and so that's why I went back to here to the potential ADU. So you see the different numbers here. So SCAG did a study, a regional study, to identify rents for available ADUs across the region, and they came up with a calculation, and this is how we derived, based on a, an estimate of 800, how we broke it down by the income category. So I could provide that also if, if that's something that the council would, would be interested in.
I wanted to recognize that you've heard feedback, feedback about preserving our community. I think that's a really big commitment here, so I appreciate that you have been considering that as you plan for sites. I know that we did not read, the public comment had come in, in a previous meeting, but it did talk a lot about transit-oriented housing development and selecting sites along where the train is. And I just wondered if you had any, if you got a chance to see or hear that comment, and if you had any feedback about that feedback.
Yeah, so let me go back, maybe, let me go to a map. So maybe this is a good one. So again, we did, a lot of the sites are in the specific plan areas. In the specific plan, you do have a setback requirement of, Jerry, if... In the specific plan, you do have a setback requirement of, uh, Jerry, if, if I get this wrong, I think it's three hundred feet.
Two hundred.
Four hundred.
Two hundred feet.
Two, two, two hundred. So, so that does limit what we can do along the, the transit corridors. One of the, one of the difficult things also is identifying the locations of lower income opportunity sites and the fact that they don't want you to over concentrate them also. But again, what makes them good lower income sites is because they're highly accessible, right? To transit, right? So you have a transit stop to the, to the, I guess it's to the north of, of, of the community. Um, that's coming in that we saw as being a very attractive, uh, asset to the location of, of sites. And I don't have that map with me, but let me see, I think it's.
And just following up on that, um, I guess Jerry, does that mean that, I mean, our own SPA prohibits us from that, but did you all hear feedback? More than, you know, we've obviously received a comment. So how had feedback been about potentially adjusting that to accommodate the housing element and development in the future?
Councilmember Rodriguez, this is Caniga. I would like to add to that. So the comment come in for the site that is adjacent to a railroad track. In our specific plan right now, it does identify site that can have residential. There's a residential overlay where you could have residential in SP five. It's just that it's not allowed within, along the track. And that reason is because the track that we have is just not a light rail. In theory, transit oriented development is great along the tra- along the track, but we need to identify the stops and what kind of track we're having. We're, we're not just having a light rail running through the city. We have a freight train and a metro link. And if we're gonna look at allowing residential along the track, we have to also look further into developing standards, working with metro to come up with design standard and construction standard to protect these residential home along the track. And that is the reason why we didn't identify homes along the track, just because we didn't want to touch that policy in SP five.
So thank you for the additional detail. Could you, um, provide more detail on how you identified, if you go to the opportunity site map with the income levels, how you determined which, where? Robert?
Yep. Yeah. So you're, so I think what you're asking is how did we assign, assign this, uh, these income levels for the different sites? Um, we first start by looking at the low income. Like I mentioned before, those are the hardest ones to plan for. And those are the ones that have the most restrictions on them. So one of the criteria that, 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 uh, HCD gives us is that low income sites cannot be any smaller than a half acre and can't be larger than ten acres. So we took that as a first, uh, blush and then also looking at where the highest resources are. So, um, when we, when we did this analysis, we used a multi variant model and we took into account, uh, resource areas. And when I say resources, I mean like transportation access, walkability to parks into, uh, uh, services, um, grocery stores, um, transit, of course, I think I said that already. Um, so all those kind of weighed into where the best sites were. And we wanted to focus on the lower income because those are the ones that are the most constrained. And then, so as we got through the less constrained ones, ended up getting that moderate income. And then you'll see there's a, an above moderate where it wasn't really resourced, um, and it didn't make the, uh, the density criteria. That was the one other thing for low income, you have to have twenty, twenty dwelling units per acre minimum. And some of these sites, um, uh, weren't, wouldn't be able to be developed, uh, at twenty acres, uh, twenty, twenty dwelling units to an acre unless you consolidate it. So that's why you see a grouping of, of low income houses, especially they're up off Glen Oaks. That's a commercial, uh, commercial center that's under, underperforming that, that we see an opportunity for mixed use there. So it would be a highly resourced area.
Thank you. And then, uh, my last question right now is, um, for the goal, um, we have, we have a lot of goals and I think of the ones like, um, affirmably advancing fair housing. I know from what I understand, we have to put down details about how we're going to be accomplishing each of these goals. Um, so when will we be presenting that to the public?
It, it is in the existing draft housing element for review right now on the city's website. So there is a whole section on policies, programs and implementation.
Well, we won't be reviewing those details in council, or is that correct?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You should have received a draft copy of the housing element. Um, and yeah, definitely, we want feedback from the council in regards to all of, all of that. Yeah.
And I think, um, Councilmember Rodriguez also, I, I, I think, um, part of your question may be those specific, um, policies. Uh, we will be coming back to council over the next, you know, year as we implement. So the, the, the specific wording of each policy will still come back to council. Um, these are the general framework for the policies that we will be, um, that, um, assume, you know, assuming staff or, or council and HCD approve and adopt the housing element, then that, that, that creates the framework for staff coming back with these specific policies to be reviewed at the planning commission and the city council.
Uh, yeah, cause what I was wondering, yeah, we're seeing what we're doing, but I want us to dive in about how we're going about it. So I appreciate that, Nick, that we're gonna be reviewing it. That concludes my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, um, I'm sorry, ma'am, I may, I just want to add, um, to answer Councilmember Rodriguez's question about next step. When, so right now we're addressing comments from HCD. We're gonna release a revised draft plans that will address the comments from HCD as well as address comments from the city council tonight before we take that to planning commission for review and recommendation to council and it will come back to council for adoption.
And that's expected to go to the planning commission at the end of February, correct?
It might have to be in March because, um, HCD wanted it to be available for public review two weeks before we hold a public hearing. So we're planning to take it at the planning commission meeting in March and then soon to city council at the end of March.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Montanias?
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, thank you, Robert, for being with us tonight. Uh, can you, uh, tell me the name of the other two consultant groups again and why they're not?
Yeah, uh, Verena Katam Associates and, and they're the senior advisor for all, all things housing element related. And then Rincon is the consultant that is working on the public safety element and the, and the environmental justice policies and the SEQA. Um, they were available unfortunately because of the fact that we had to reschedule, uh, this meeting a number of times. They, they just weren't available this particular, uh, meeting time.
Are they the only people in their shop?
Uh, no, um, but we had a, it was a situation where we, they had to scramble and it just, they weren't able to, to, to attend this evening. It's been over the, the course of four straight weeks that we've been trying to adjust our schedules to make this meeting. So I'm here, I, I'm, I'm here to answer all your questions and if.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you being here, but I do, you know, and, and if you can't send me their direct contact, I do think it's irresponsible of them to not be present. Um, it's an important meeting. And I for one would not like for them to apply for any other business in the city of San Fernando if they're not gonna take this seriously. This is a really important, you know, discussion. And, um, you know, these, the sections on the environmental justice and even the outreach are just not very well developed. And so I do have a lot of hope for them. So would like to talk to them. I think that's, and I, and I would like, you know, make, you know, make, I mean, all of our directors have to be prepared to be helping. But, you know, we are paying public dollars for this. Take this very serious, helping with a very serious community and we do expect them to be responsible and to, you know, meet the, meet the requirements for attending these meetings. Okay. So I want to get into some of the questions, um, with you on, um, what I thought was interesting is this household types. And then maybe you could walk me through this to make sure that I'm understanding it properly too. So what, uh, what I'm seeing is that on the average household size between two thousand and twenty nineteen, so let's just say the last twenty years, we've had a drop. So household size is now smaller than it was, uh, the last previous ten years. Is that correct?
I'm looking right now, number of people per household. Don't have that readily available. I'm just looking here. I have breakdowns of household by household size, renter owners totals, they, but I have it by size, not by, by year right in front of me here. What was, I guess, what is the, the, the question then that relates to?
The, the household characteristics, right, from twenty, two thousand to twenty nineteen, average household size. That, that decreases by about what, eight percent?
Okay.
Do you have those numbers in front of you?
No, I do not. But what, I guess, what, what, what is, what is the question related to, to that?
You have the report that's in our council agenda in front of you?
Councilmember Montanias, are you talking about the household type on page fourteen of the housing element? Where it shows two thousand and four point O and in two thousand and nineteen, it dropped to three point seven?
Yeah. Is that, is that correct? That there's actually a decrease in household size?
That's what the census indicated, yes.
Yeah, that's the data from.
Average family size is smaller as well?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. So that's the trend from the, from the, from the census, yes.
So is the trend, oh, it, what, what I'm reading, which was actually surprising, the numbers were surprising to me because there's such a push to increase housing at a really rapid rate. And so you're proposing like two thousand new units, but I was surprised. I expected these numbers to be different. And so I want to make sure that I'm reading them right, right? Uh, it says that average household size is down, you know, by closer to ten percent. The family size is down. Families as a whole, like there's less families, um, living in San Fernando.
Yeah.
Married couples with children, that was a huge drop, twenty-five percent. And then married couples with no children was really the shocker for me. Almost eighty percent of married couples in San Fernando have no children.
Yeah. So an out, an out migration of, of children.
Right. That was, that was surprising. I don't know if it is to anybody else on the council, but to me it really was. Um, and then the married, um, the married couples with no children, almost like eighty percent. So even, even though you may have couples that are moving into the city, they aren't having, at, at least not yet, right? I don't know how it relates to the age. They're, you're still not having children in the household. Um, and that at eighty percent was, it seemed like that was the biggest growth. Like, uh, things like most, a lot of the new growth into the city are couples with no children. And then you have a decrease even in single parent households, sixty percent.
Yeah.
So Councilmember Montanias, the, the number you're looking at, you know, is interesting because a few years back, SCAG actually acknowledged the changing of families, the demographic of families and families with kids and no kids. So a few years ago, they did have a seminar and that discussion and they actually took that into consideration in this, um, RENA analysis calculation. They noticed that there is a change in the population.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a pretty, I mean, it's, it's pretty, uh, striking. And then like the increase of households, residents that are sixty-five years and over, three hundred and eighteen percent increase. So it seems like it's more seniors, right? So as, as we look at housing, definitely, um, smaller families, um, more seniors, uh, married couples with no children. Uh, and so I, I don't see the correlation of, uh, you gotta increase housing so really quick, really fast, because when you go to the, um, the overcrowding numbers, the overcrowding, you don't have high overcrowding or even the moderate overcrowding. What you do have is you have high cost burden on rental homes, but people that own their homes are actually have lower, uh, cost burden. Right? So if you own your house in San Fernando, which probably kind of makes sense, right? You, you paid at a, at a good rate, don't sell your house, your house. You know, you're, but if you're obviously starting to rent, you're gonna have a, a higher cost burden on your income. The other thing that was surprising to me was the drop in the last ten years on people's income level. Is that correct? That people were making a lot more money back in two thousand? You know, more sixty-four thousand, thousand plus as opposed to today where they're making less than fifty-eight thousand dollars?
Yeah, I think that's also an out, outward trend also, right? So there's out migration in the city. So the, the wage earners, so you got an aging, a community that's aging, that's, you know, empty nesters. So I could, so that could correlate with a, a lower adjusted median income across the board.
Well, that, that's the kind of the analysis that I, that I would like, being on the, you know, as we look at planning issues and what San Fernando needs, it, it seems to me that what we need is really protect the areas where we could create jobs and well-paying jobs, where people could have a middle-class lifestyle or higher education possibility, even if it's a class style. And you, you, it's like this seems to just be taking kind of a, a larger, you know, housing problem, crisis that, you know, the county and other regions aren't really dealing with and trying to have San Fernando soak in a, a lot of housing that we really can't afford, um, because we're so backlog. Um, I didn't see the numbers in here and I'm not sure if you're gonna add them in, but you know, do you have the numbers on how far behind we are on deferred maintenance, for example, on our streets and sidewalks, sewer system, water system? Do you have those estimates?
Later in the analysis, we were looking at, um, the water isn't as an issue, so there will have to be a program to, to, uh, to, to secure additional water. Uh, you, your current agreement, you're getting very close to your existing capacity.
But I don't see that. Where is it in this report? I was looking for it, but I didn't see it. What page should I be looking at?
One second. It's in, uh, uh, page sixty-one. Section two, or section C, item two, public services and facilities.
Okay. Yeah, that's high level, but do we have like a, a number, right? There wasn't a number there. How much money does the city have to actually bring in in order to be able to have, uh, its public services, facilities, water, sewer, street, sidewalks, uh, properties repaired even for just fifteen public? That number?
That's not something that we would re, we would analyze in the housing element. You just need to put policies in place to, for the city to make agreements to secure more water. Um, but we don't go into the contract or the, the, the dollar figures because we don't, we're not the negotiator of that.
Do, do you take a look at, uh, before making the recommendations of adding two thousand new units? Um, do you take a look at the cost in doing so?
Well, okay. So there's, yeah, there's a couple ways to answer that question. So it's a state requirement that, that you meet that RENA allocation. So we're trying to find sites that can accommodate that need. Um, there, you don't have to develop these, right? The city is not a developer. It just needs to make, identify properties that could meet that obligation. They're not obligated to develop that. Obviously, when you develop a property, that's a part of the development agreement negotiation. Obviously, when you develop a property, that's a part of the development agreement negotiation, so the builder, the onus is on the builder to se- help secure that water, so we don't, we don't do a pro forma analysis of, of water contracts on, on the housing element. It's just not. I mean, we, we may be able to circle back with the Public Works Director and maybe get some insight, if that would help. Answer your question, we'd be happy to do that, um.
Councilmember Montanaz, um, so regarding water service, um, right now, we're doing a housing policy where we need to show the state that we can accommodate more housing. The next step about water availability is when a project comes in, the developer, before we issue building permit or before we approve their entitlement, will need to demonstrate that there will be water capacity to service that development, and that's when we'll do, um, environmental review on it. Um, part of that, we may ask them to give us a water assessment of our existing water, and depending how many units they put in, um, how far we can get, and they will be responsible to work with the city to bring in more, more water, to supply water to their development.
I understand the basic, right, of getting, you know, water service to any new unit that gets built, but that's, that's not, the, the question is, is not that. The question is, understanding what are deferred maintenance, maintenance costs are right, right now, on our streets, on our sidewalks, on our water system, our sewer system? Infrastructure, right? How much does the city need to really go after right now? And invest in order to make sure that people that currently live in San Fernando, that are renters or homeowners, are, is, you know, property-like taxpayers, that we are getting the best services that we can as a priority. If you push new units on the city, you're now adding in additional liabilities when we are not even complying with offering the basic city services at the highest level for San Fernando residents, and I think that's an economic justice, an environmental justice issue, that you, that we, the city already knows that we're not complying with the basics at the, at the quality that we should. And then there's this proposal that's coming in, not from our demographics, because we just went through it, right? Smaller households, you know, more seniors, not, not as many families. There is a significant overcrowding issue. The state has this random, you know, just, uh, cookie cutter approach to how housing is just gonna be spread everywhere without looking at the realities of communities, and that's what this is. This is just kind of a cookie cutter analysis. Clearly, we don't have the da- the data, right? But if we understand the data, and if, and if we understood, like, I would like to know as council member, how much is it? How much money do we need to fix all the sidewalks, the streets, the sewer system, water infrastructure? Right, the lighting, clean the streets, right? Ensure our, our, our public, uh, our, our police department is fully funded. What's that cost to provide for the existing number of residential, residential and business commercial units that we currently have as a priority? Before we say, let's bring in additional uh, populations or units that we cannot afford to maintain at the quality that San Fernando residents deserve. That's the question. Not just a line hookup to water. That is a basic, you know, I understand that. I wanna know, like, what, you know, what we truly need, how much more we've got to do to actually prepare us as good planners, right? We're not paper pushers. We're not just gonna take whatever the state is mandated, and they're unfunded mandates, right? They're not even giving us any money to do any of this. So I don't want us just to just, just do what, what it seems like that has been done with this report. You just regurgitated a number to us, but not giving us a, a, a financial way to viably achieve it. And that's where I have concerns with this analysis. This could, this could be done for, for any city. This, this, I don't see this being specific to any detail, because I'm not hearing the detail, right? Because I don't think the detail was studied in that way. I could be wrong, which is why I'm asking the question.
Uh, uh, thank you, Councilmember Montanaz. I just wanted to provide a little clarification. I don't think, uh, anyone, uh, any staff or the consultants, uh, disagree with, with any of your comments. I mean, we are all, um, under, we, we all know that this is going to be, especially if there's a build out, to the extent the state is, is imposing, forcing upon us. It will be a very significant impact on, um, on the city's services, on our infrastructure. Um, I, the only thing I, I do wanna kind of clarify is that, um, I, you know, I, I wanna make sure it's just, it's clear that that everyone understands that how CLV or the, um, uh, any of the consultants, no one is recommending that we have these two thousand, there's twenty-two hundred units. Staff is certainly not recommending that there's, there's twenty-two hundred units added. Um, that, that, that decision and recommendation has actually just completely been taken out of our hands, out of the city council's hands, and imposed, um, upon us, and given a deadline of, um, you know, it was February, but we have to have this whole, you know, this whole process going, so um, that doesn't say that we shouldn't, we shouldn't have a lot of that, those analysis, uh, points in, in the housing element, those data points, um, you know, ready. Uh, it's just that that can't predetermine whether or not we, we plan for these twenty-two hundred units, uh, the, the, the state, because that's, that's just being imposed. The, the decision, as far as the number of units, has been completely taken out of our hands by the state, and I, I know you under, understand, I just wanted to make that clarity, you know, for anyone that, that is listening, that, that no one is recommending this number of units. We, this is a, um, a, a pill that, that has been forced upon us, all cities, to swallow, um, you know, for this next eight, eight years, so uh, I, we cer- certainly hear you loud and clear on a lot of those additional analysis points, and, and we'll work, uh, you know, we wanna hear, uh, your other points, and so we can work to, uh, try to get some of that, that more detailed data to the extent that it's, uh, available.
Yeah, I, and, and the report just has to be written in a way that, the document is, is clear, the, it, San Fernando cannot do, cannot meet what the state is mandating, and, and, and they have to hear it. You know, it, what this does, it just says, oh, yeah, sure, we could do this. But then what, what does that mean? It, it means, uh, you're taking away our ability to build good jobs in this town. That's what this data is, that's what I see in this data. People need to get paid better. They need to have good jobs to be able to afford their homes and not have such a high cost burden, and the city needs to do a better job of providing city services. Right? This analysis says, oh, sure, we could do two thousand households. As a matter of fact, here's another eight hundred, as you said. No, that, that, that's, it, it's, it's a, it's an analysis that doesn't work. Um, Robert, and I think that I'd like for you to take more time to actually write a report that reflects the realities of San Fernando and be honest with the state. It's the best thing we could ever do. Is just be honest with them to, to let them know why it is that, you know, we cannot do this. Um, to begin with, I think if, once we look at just how, how much money we need for our police department and our public works department alone, the basics, right? The most fundamental basics of public safety and public works, that alone is gonna put us you know, in a, in a, in a place where that has to be a priority as, as a city. We stick to care of our residents and our business community now, and we need to build jobs, really good jobs here in the city for people to be able to have a better quality of life. The other thing that I, that I also wanna point out, um, is just on your environmental hazards, if that is, 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 is that section C on page fifty-nine? Is that your environmental justice analysis? Environmental, which again, spell check, at minimum, do a spell check, please, and infrastructure constraints. Is that the environmental justice, or is there another section that I should be looking at?
Environment, that is environmental hazard. Environmental justice is a completely different subject matter.
Okay, which, which page is that?
Environmental justice? It's just policy, so there is not a section on environmental justice. What the state has required is because whenever you update more than two or more elements, you need to incorporate environmental justice-related policies and programs?
Right.
Right, so.
Okay, so there is no environmental justice analysis?
That is correct. There's policies.
Well, we had an environmental justice consultant. Didn't you say that GreenCon was the environmental justice consultant?
That is correct.
And what was their analysis in their section?
That was the next section I'm gonna cover is environmental justice.
Okay, what page should I go to?
Environmental justice is not in, there's not a section of environmental justice in the housing element. There are just policies, and there are analysis of, to, to assess and implement environmental justice policies in both the housing element and the safety element, and we're gonna cover the topic area of environmental justice next, and then talk about the, 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 the safety element.
Councilmember Montanaz, um, what Robert is saying, I think what you're looking for is an environmental justice element. That is not what we're doing here.
No, no, not the element, because I know we don't have to, we don't, we're not kicking in the environmental justice element at this point, that I know. I'd like for us to get one, but we're not doing the environmental justice element, even the, just the commentary on environmental justice.
So there, there are some maps in the housing element and in the safety element that shows, um, some environmental constraints. But under state law for environmental justice, what we're trying to do here is just incorporating policies, and that is how do we engage with the community, do more public outreach, get them more involved in cities' policy? That is what we're incorporating in our housing element and the safety element at this point. Um, in the future, we will be looking at finding some grant funding to do environmental justice. Um, but this evening, as part of our housing and safety element, we're just including them as policy.
Okay, and can you go through those policy recommendations for the public?
Um, I think that's the next section of the presentation. After the housing element, we have, um, the next section on environmental justice policy that we can talk about.
Okay, so those are, those are the questions. I mean, again, um, I think you guys understand where I'm coming from. You know, I try to be as, you know, clear and direct as possible, but, you know, I think the numbers are unrealistic. They're unfair. They actually contribute more towards economic injustice and environmental, you know, injustices. Um, you know, the trends don't reflect what is being pushed for, um, and we have to prioritize taking care of the residents, uh, the business community that we do currently have in San Fernando. You know, to make sure that we do provide people the highest quality of life possible, and that we provide the top services possible, and I'd like for more work to be done on this report, um, to, to reflect a true analysis, um, that can be provided to the state, um, so the state can actually begin to open their eyes to the realities of neighborhoods like San Fernando. So I, I, I do not support this. And those, those are my questions for now. I'll listen to the environmental justice piece.
Councilmember Ballin.
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor, and I'm in a hundred percent agreement with Councilmember Montanaz. Um, I, I have a couple of questions. On your slide, when you talked about the various income levels, Robert, I didn't see the dollar amounts, and I think that would be really good for the community to know exactly what you're talking about, when you say low income, very low income, moderate, and what, what have you with, uh, the, the slide that you presented, because that's what the, um, unless I missed, did I miss it? Were the dollar amounts there?
Yeah, one, one second.
Okay.
These are the media, the, so it's by median family income? For the, so that's how we identify, so extremely very, it's actually extremely very low income. It is below seventeen thousand five twenty-seven.
And, and that's annually, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and moderate is considered seventy thousand? And above moderate, okay.
Yeah, above, above moderate would be over seventy thousand.
Okay, and the, do you have information on the percentage of? Is that the percentage of people in San Fernando, thirty percent are extremely low income?
Yeah, give me a second, I can go to that.
Councilmember Ballin, um, the thirty percent is the percentage of income. So thirty percent, um, median family income equates to seventeen thousand. I think what you're looking for are the number of households that fit into any of these categories.
Looking for.
That is another table in the housing element, I believe.
Page, page thirty-two. Table twenty, affordable housing cost by household and tenure. Oh. Well, that's the cost, sorry, that's not the number of families. Uh, page fifteen, sixteen, page sixteen. Table six, household income levels twenty, or two thousand to twenty nineteen. That's a breakdown.
Can we put the slide up?
It is, I don't have it on the slide, but let me. Can you see this table six?
Yes.
Okay. So this was the, the MFI that we, the fifty-eight four twenty-five, sorry, the fifty-eight four twenty-five would be the median household income for twenty nineteen, which is the last census. We don't have twenty twenty numbers yet.
Hmm, okay, thank you very much, and thank you for putting the slide up. I know that our committee would like to be aware of what, um, that scale is. Now, what are the consequences of not meeting the state requirements? Or the RENA numbers?
So you, you need to show that you can accommodate the, the RENA requirement, um, and, and if you do not, if you fail to do that, you, you get a non-certified, you, you'd be considered for non-certified, and if you have a non-certified housing element, the state can withhold any state funds, um, any grants that are state-funded, um, they can, um, they can also exact, uh, fees, so penalties if you have a non-compliant, non-certified, um, housing element.
Have they done it in the past, when, uh, other cities have not?
Yeah, they actually have, uh, uh, the gov, the, the, the state sued the city of Huntington Beach for, for, uh, a non-compliant housing element. They stopped their funding, and then, um, yeah, they had, they did an out-of-court settlement, but, yeah, the, the, I don't know what the, the city.
Well, my understanding, and the, did they comply in the end?
I, they are working with the state to, to adopt a compliant housing element.
Okay, and that's been going on for several, several years, correct?
Yes, yes, it has.
Okay. You know, one of the things, of course, what the Councilmember Montanaz brought up is, you know, our, our water requirements for this type of housing, additional housing, and it really, really concerns me because this means we may have to buy metropolitan water district water, which is very expensive, and I, I think we have to factor this in. Uh, I'd like more information on how the current residents are going to be impacted by this increase in the numbers. The other, yes, go ahead.
I was gonna say, maybe, maybe the, the staff could interject, but in a, a development, uh, or entitlement process, the, the applicant for a development has to provide will serve letters um, from the municipal, the, the, the service, municipal service agencies. um, from the municipal, the, the, the service, municipal service agencies. If they can't, it is on them to negotiate and to ensure that there are wa, there is water available. So depending on the scale of the project, a development agreement is, is, is commonplace. So it's not on the onus, only on the city to pro, to, to provide the water, but it is the develop, it's on the onus of the developer too. So we need to look at, you know, just stepping back a little bit on the, on the, on the water issue. The city just has to have a plan to help to, moving forward, you know, basically something to the effect of, we'll, we'll, we'll negotiate with, with the developer and local, uh, water agencies to ensure that, that water is provided for these developments. You know, that, that's the kind of policy that, 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 that ACD wants to see is, is that the city is, you know, will, will, will work with the applicant and the agencies to secure the water rates.
So I wanna ask, uh, Kamika or Nick this question. Any of these newer developments, can we, uh, I'm thinking they may have to buy water through us from Metropolitan Water Districts, so they would be, uh, at a different water rate than our residents at, so what do you think, Nick?
I, um, Councilmember, I don't know, I can't answer your question right now if what you're thinking is probably, since we have to buy water, if we can charge a resident a different water rate than existing resident, that's something we have to look into and talk to our city attorney. So.
Okay, I'm not really looking for the answer at this moment, but I wanna propose the question because if we're going to be impacted by, the residents are gonna be impacted and their water rates are gonna go up oh, quite a bit, quite a bit, probably a hundred dollars more, uh, if we end up with this type of, uh, additional housing. Well, I'm real concerned about that. We all are on the city council, concerned about that. And, um, the other thing is, I don't, people talk a lot about walkability and all of this and, and transit. But this part, we need to get a parking permit in place. Uh, it's very, very critical. And I, I just don't think I need to add more because we, this is a discussion we've been having for many years and I really would like to get that resolved. Uh, we have a real issue with that. And with that, uh, Madam Mayor.
If, if I may, um, Madam Mayor, just to, just as a high-level response, so we did, um, as, as the council probably remembers, we completed the, um, the, the data gathering and the parking management master plan. Um, so the next step for that and, and one that we're working on now is now we need to, um, develop the, um, the guideline, using that plan, develop the actual, uh, parameters and guidelines and process for, um, putting a, um, a, uh, the park, parking, uh, districts in place, residential parkage. So, so staff is starting work on that now, um, and that will be, that is part of the work plan, um, that we'll be working on over the next few months. We'll be, we'll be establishing those guidelines so that the community, the neighborhoods can start putting those, um, those in place.
Well, hopefully you could target my birthday as that date. So I won't tell you when it is, but I'll be looking forward to it. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to begin just by reiterate, reiterating a few things, uh, for our constituents, those that are still awake at least, that, uh, many of these rules are passed by Sacramento and Sacramento continues to pass rules, um, with very little to no input from the local governments and municipalities that, um, are affected by them. And these exercises, um, are really staff and city council and our consultants just trying to do the best we can in order to mitigate the, uh, you know, myriad number of problems that come, um, from trying to implement, uh, these rules. And, um, my understanding, and I'd like to have Mr. Kimball jump in if you can at this point, is that we have incoming staff, uh, in addition to, um, our, our new, um, director that will help us with many of these housing issues. Could you comment briefly on how, um, a housing, uh, employee or future housing, uh, employee could help, um, throughout this process?
Uh, yeah, certainly, um, so in, in, I don't wanna get too deep into it, uh, into the specifics because we have that agendized at a future, uh, meeting to talk about a, a, a more robust, uh, housing program, which would potentially come along with a, uh, a, a staff member who would be responsible for, um, working with the housing community on, um, you know, implementing many of these policies, environmental justice policies, um, income, uh, income equity policies. Uh, if, again, that's, that's, city council will have to approve that and we'll, we'll have those discussions, um, uh, in the next few we, in the next, you know, coming up very soon. So I, but I, I do want to, um, that we, it would require, I mean, obviously, in addition to, um, the, any planning, uh, as you state, um, and, and, and as Councilmember Montanaz and as Councilmember Ballin have, have, and have all, and, and Councilor Rodriguez, these are really unfunded mandates from the state. They're mandating us to, to put these in, in place. And, and in addition to, um, you know, that, those, the infrastructure costs, uh, water costs, there's also the, um, you know, there, there is also a staff cost in having to implement these programs, manage these programs and, and make sure that there is an equitable, uh, distribution of housing, so.
Thank you.
That discussion's upcoming shortly.
Uh, and I would also like to try and contextualize a little bit about, uh, the housing affordability crisis that we're facing in California and even here in San Fernando. And so if our consultants or, or staff, whoever would like to jump in, um, could comment on where we can expect to learn about things like what the average rent is in San Fernando and what portion of that, uh, what portion of the median family income comprises, uh, you know, rent or mortgage, et cetera. Um, I think that's an important point for folks to kind of understand, to really, um, grasp how affordability, um, is in crisis mode here. So, Mr. Kim, could you comment at all on, um, how San Fernando's average rental prices compare or how our, you know, home prices compare? Because, um, it certainly seems to me that San Fernando, um, is not exempt from, uh, the issues that affect lots of, of California generally in terms of, you know, home buying being out of reach for so many, especially young folks.
Sure, can you see my screen?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yeah, so this table seventeen is, we, we, uh, surveyed, um, the, the rental ranges, right? So the medi, the, the rental ranges are broken down here. Uh, you know, median rent for studios thirteen hundred, one-bedroom about sixteen, uh, two-bedroom just shy of eighteen, and three-bedroom right around twenty-five, twenty-six hundred. Um, these are the breakdowns of the housing prices by San Fernando standards in the, in the city of Los Angeles and then the county as a whole. Um, so, yeah, they're quite a bit less than the city of Los Angeles, albeit, city of Los Angeles is, is, is a very large, diverse, uh, city. It encapsulates the city of San Fernando and then the county. So I think the county would be a more of a better indicator because it's over a broader area of disparate, um, and similar communities.
But even these numbers, you know, that you show indicate that San Fernando's, uh, rate of growth is actually greater than Los Angeles and LA County.
Your property values are increasing as a percentile, that is correct.
Um, and I don't know if we could perhaps add this at a future time, but if you could scroll up again to that previous table, um, I think it would be helpful to contextualize it as a function of the average median income as well. Perhaps one more column, so folks could see that, you know, thirteen-ten is, I don't know, twelve percent of your monthly income if you're making average, et cetera, you know, um, I think.
Yeah, percentage of the MFI based on, yeah, okay, yeah, sure, absolutely.
My next question, perhaps that we can attack in the future as well. Are there any estimates or projections on the impact to affordability that creating this number of housing units would have? I mean, I understand that we're trying to set these goals in order to help housing affordability, but is there any projections as to how affordability is going to be positively impacted if we do in fact create this number of housing units? Is there that connection being drawn?
Well, scarcity drives price, right? So if there is more options, the invert, you know, the more options, it would, the trend would, would seem to suggest that the property values are, would be going down, but there are a lot of things to consider, not just regional, but just economic and rates, uh, you know, mortgage rates and, and the liquidity of, of, of loans. But, um, I mean, I guess that's sort of the premise, right, is that, you know, scarcity drives price, right? So if you have more options, the property value should, should level out. But I know that we do have a housing crisis here, so, I mean, in the state. So I, 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 I honestly don't have a study that I could reference off the bat. And we could, you know, I, I can go back and, and, and do a little bit of research and see if we can dig something up that shows a, a nexus to onboarding or in, the introduction of affordable housing, uh, solutions and, and there are impacts on, on median, median house, house value.
I think that would have helped just to kind of give reference as to what it is that we're really trying to accomplish here in terms of creating all these housing units. Um, I think my colleagues have expressed concerns that are very commonplace throughout the community as to where additional units are going and why we're building them. And I think if we can add some color as to what we're actually, we're, we're trying to accomplish, you know, I know it's in the document. Um, it's a very lengthy and robust one, but I think, you know, during these presentations, when folks, you know, may not have read, uh, I think it, it will certainly help. Moving on to, um, the process with HCD, if I could have our, our director, um, chime in here as well. Could you kind of lay out the roadmap for us in terms of our draft workshops here? The framework we're trying to employ, um, the, uh, adoption that we're supposed to do by whatever October date, et cetera? And then the policies that come afterwards? I mean, very high level, just so folks can understand.
Sure, so we're right now addressing comments from HCD. We're gonna put out a new draft of the housing element that will be presented to Planning Commission. And then whatever the Planning Commission recommends to council for adoption, we'll adopt the housing element. And the housing element is really a framework, a roadmap for the city to implement policy to promote affordable housing. And in the housing element, we have here are programs that we're gonna implement moving forward. And some of those programs are providing first-time homebuyer loan, rehab loan. And that will be on your next month discussion on how we're gonna implement it, what resources we need. Um, by October of this year, what we need to do is do a rezone. That will have to be presented to the Planning Commission and come to the council for adoption. That rezone is not increasing density in our existing residential neighborhood. It's just a mixed-use overlay that allows us to put residential in existing commercial corridor to support the number of housing unit that we need to meet.
And what if council decides not to pass that? What happens?
Then we'll have a housing element that's not in compliance with HCD, with the, um, state housing and community development department. And as Robert mentioned earlier, will not be, we won't be unqualified to apply for a state grant that support housing.
Understood.
Could be a fine. The state could come down on us and take our land use authority on re-regulating these housing unit for entitlement. So there's a lot the state could do, um.
Could I, could I ask, um, the sites that we've selected, um, is there a danger that HCD rejects any of these sites in terms of suitability? And what is it like, um, for you working with HCD in order to kind of, you know, dodge those, those issues?
So, um, that's what we're working on right now, is providing a feasibility analysis to HCD that the site that's been identified could get developed within the next eight years. And what they're asking us to show are, um, programs that we're gonna put in place to promote development of these sites. And one of the program we have available that we will be doing is updating our state density, updating our density bonus ordinance to comply with state regulation and possibly look at providing incentive, um, we have to.
And that's because our current density bonus is not compliant, is that correct?
That's correct. Our current density bonus ordinance right now is not in compliance with state law.
Okay. I think I'm gonna leave it right there, in the interest of time, you know, we have so much more to cover. So I'll defer my time, Mayor, um, and I'll circle back, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmembers, uh, for all your great input and comments. And, um, I just kinda wanna add on my own here is, uh, I, I appreciate that, uh, part of this housing element, that what you focused on was, uh, that the residential areas of the city were preserved. That's like something that's very important to me and I know to many of our residents. I too have the concern and don't like the idea that we're having to provide a, a plan that, uh, contains a thousand seven hundred ninety-five units for our city, additional units for our city. I, I don't, uh, support high-density population. And I'd have concern, the same concerns in terms of the water and the sewer system and that we be able to provide for those additional families that are coming into our city. And I, you know, I also noticed that the change in the, our population in terms of seniors and the wages they, they, our families had, the number of family members in the home. I, um, also noticed that as well. Um, I, when I looked at the, the housing element, I looked at it as, uh, someone who, who was completely new to it. And, and it is kind of new to me because it's just something new for me that I've never really done. But, uh, so I'm gonna go through it, page, by certain pages that I have noted that I have questions on. So on page twenty-three and twenty-four, it addresses the current location, um. Is there a list for addresses of current, uh, locations for affordable housing? We, we, you know, like the tables tell us about the housing type and the tenure and all that, but do we know how many affordable units that we have in the city that are under the? Um, I spoke with you, uh, uh, Kamika about this. What is that I'm looking for? The, um, like section eight housing, right? Do we know how many units in the city for low, low income that we have that are noted as that? Is there a list?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, um, in the housing element, somewhere it states that we previously approved a hundred and seventy-four units as affordable housing. The breakdown of that, I don't believe we have it unless Jerry may have it, but, um, that's one thing we're looking forward to doing is compiling a list of all the affordable housing. When I talk about affordable housing, these are the housing unit that the city approved and they are restricted to be affordable for fifty years. I don't, we, I don't think we have that list and that's one thing we're looking to get a staff on to create a list to keep track of it and make sure that when they're getting resold, it's being resold to the next low-income family.
Because when they sell those homes, they have to continue to be affordable?
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and just to add a, a, a little bit additional information, so, um, you know, part of, when the state, again, eliminated redevelopment in twenty-twelve and, and re, eliminated the housing set aside that cities like San Fernando use to fund these programs and fund a, a housing coordinator-type position. Um, that position at the city, that we did, we used to have a housing coordinator position, that, that got eliminated due to, you know, the budget constraints because there was no more funding resource. So, um, so part of, of the, uh, proposal that we'll talk about, uh, you know, in a few weeks about bringing one back is the need to have exactly what you, you know, kind of update an inventory so that we have a better grasp of, of those resources that are available to our residents and to make sure that we're, um, you know, uh, from. and to make sure that we're, um, you know, uh, from an enforcement standpoint that all those uh those units are compliant with, you know, covenants and everything else. So um, you know, a- a- again, that was part of a lot of the pullback in um, in in finances quite a few years ago and 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 part of the city council's kind of effort to restore some of those services uh going forward.
Thank you. And then not that it necessarily has to be a part of this, but just that we we know how many we have or or just even the number of them, right? Um, on on page thirty-three, on table twenty-two, we, it has the the labeling of overcrowding, households percent, and LA County percent. But uh, shouldn't we have a column there for the city of San Fernando?
Though those are San Fernando, it's just that uh we need to update the column headings. The household and the percentage, tho- those two columns are are for San Fernando.
Okay, thank you. And then page forty, um, number three, the feasibility and development standards. Uh, density bonuses, can you explain what they are and why they're required?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So um, that's what I mentioned earlier in response to Vice Mayor Common. So we have a density bonus in our city that is not in compliance with state density bonus law. State density bonus is really law from the state that if a developer come in and want to provide certain percentage of affordable housing, they can accept, they can exceed our height limit, they can also not meet our setback. They have incentive or they they could go bigger, go larger than what our codes allow if they provide a certain number of affordable housing unit. And um, our ordinance right now is not in compliance with state. So we will have to update it to in to be compliance with the state density bonus law.
And can you explain why there there are no limitations on densities uh placed on projects within a half mile of the major transit stops? Just on page forty-three, actually, top of the page.
So um, correct me if I'm wrong, Robert, on this. On the new state density bonus law, if you're within a half mile transit stop, we cannot cap the density. So right now, housing development on specific site is cap on certain number of dwelling unit per acre. But if you're within half a trans, half a mile from a transit stop, we cannot set the maximum density cap on there. And that is state law.
Okay. And then on page forty-two, there's the CUP. Can you, can you explain what a CUP is? You know, and some of the questions I'm asking for the benefit of those listening or that don't fully understand some of these.
Um, so the P stands for permitted uses and the C stands for conditional use permit. So those are uses that are permitted with approval of a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission. And in 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 Plan Commission consideration of those conditional use permit, they could assess the operation of those businesses and put in condition to limit the operation to protect the community.
Thank you. And going back to page forty-two, table twenty-seven, uh, there's some Ps and Cs noted there as codes. But there, um, there's no explanation as to what they are, so maybe you can add that at the bottom?
Yes, we'll add it to the footer under the note. Looks like we have some as prohibit, we'll include the P and the C.
Thank you. And at the bottom, single family residential, it makes mention to, the very last line makes mention to design guidelines. But there are no design guidelines here. Could there be a link or or tell us where we can find them?
We could clarify that the design guideline is available on our city website.
And provide the little occasion. Thank you. Page forty-three. Oh, we already did that one. There's a note here on same thing is that eliminate parking requirements for ADUs within the half mile of the transit stops. Can you explain why that is?
Madam Mayor, does actually state law that if you're within half a mile of a major transit stop or a high transit corridor, we cannot ask for parking? So essentially, our ADU ordinance right now is asking for parking. We'll have to update our ordinance to comply with state law and remove that language about parking requirement.
Page forty-four, uh, sometimes under the bullet here. Okay, the, right under the bullets on page forty-four, it's in order to comply with the most recent state laws, the program has been included in the uh element to amend the San Fernando zoning code provisions. So if you could add the zoning code provisions or where those can be found? A link or something there? It's right under the la- the the five bullets there on page forty-four. You see that?
I just wanted to make a, I wanted to make a comment about referencing pages in a document that's not a, that's not the zoning. If you're go, if we're gonna do a zoning update, then you're gonna make this document reference an erroneous page. So just keep that in mind that if you start to reference another document by page, you come into a, an issue with, um, not inconsistency, so.
Robert, um, Madam Mayor is not asking us to reference a page, but what she's asking us to um provide direction to where readers can find the city zoning code or the design guidelines. So it's just a link to the code. She's referring to page in our Housing Element right now. So like um, on page forty-four, it says San Fernando zoning code provision. We just need to say that it's available on our city website and then provide the link to it.
Yes. Then on page forty-five, um, there's a C dash one, C dash two. So for someone who doesn't know anything about C dash one and two, then where can we find that information? Just something that directs us so we can know where to, where those, we can find that type of zoning.
Madam Mayor, what would you, we'll add acronym glossary into this document. It'll be the first section in our Housing Element would have a list of all the acronym. And that way you could just flip back to that section to see what it stands for.
Good thing you mentioned that because I have a list. I'll send that to you.
Thank you.
It was for my own benefit to, so I could find, understand things. Page sixty. There's here, the city's replacing. Um, on a public ser- on number two, public services and facilities, it says the city is replacing the water conveyance system on an ongoing basis so that the existing capacity will be maintained. What is the conveyance system?
Mr. Kimball, maybe we can ask our Public Works Director to.
Yeah, I believe that's referencing the uh, the sewer system.
It's the water conveyance system. So that's actually saying that we're updating our, maintaining our water system to maintain existing water capacity. Um, we can get that information to you.
Okay. And then up above, the first, uh, on that same page sixty, it says uh, uh, some mention of the special study zones. But where are those special study zones? This is under the environmental hazards, right?
Yeah, ma'am, I made the special studies on would be in our safety element where it identified that different environmental hazard, it identified landslide, earthquake fault. So we can explain that um to refer to the safety element to look at these maps.
Okay, that's good. And then it also states there's a San Fernando fault, is this correct?
I believe that might be an error, Robert, do you know? I checked the safety element and I did not see a San Fernando fault. But we can verify the information and correct it.
And so then the the map will show where the Verdugo fault is? Assuming there's a Verdugo fault, right?
If there is one.
And then uh, below that is the the second line about the handsome dam evacuation contingency plan? Should there be a link for that as well on that?
Um, we'll have to find that plan and see if it's available on the city website. If there is, we can include a link to it. If not, we can note that the plan is in file with the city, which department you can go to to review it.
Okay. Let me see. So um, this is on page sixty-two. The number two, San Fernando's Rena and the twenty percent buffer. Can you explain a little bit about that? And how that works in terms of the numbers of the seventeen ninety-five? What the buffer is, how many units that that includes and the total unit being proposed?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Robert, Robert, okay.
Yeah, yeah, the twenty percent buffers are recommendation by HCD. In the event, so we program for the Rena allocation. In the event that a development uh is no longer uh viable for a residential site insofar as, for an example, i- we have some uh mixed use zones that could be developed completely uh one hundred percent commercial that we have designated already as an opportunity site. If that one went off, you know, off the list, basically was developed with no units, we would have to find an alternative site to accommodate for that loss. So they say no net loss, in other words, have a surplus of available sites in the event that one of the properties uh is developed at either below the density that we're estimating or um, in the the case that I just explained, a mixed use development, developing a hundred percent commercial. So that's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. We're actually recommending a fifteen percent, right around a fifteen percent buffer. But the guidance has been a twenty percent. And and the reason that we we went with the the fifteen percent is because of the built up nature of the community.
There was another area here, and I'm I'm not sure where I read this, around page sixty. But it's uh, the remaining five percent is is the form of imported water purchased from the Metropolitan Water District? Is it's, um, it's, it seemed like it, we we were doing that on a regular basis, buying five percent, is that correct?
Madam Mayor, I'm not sure if that is. Um, I'll check with our Public Works Director after the meeting to see if we're purchasing a five percent annually or is it a five percent? Or are we just having an opportunity to make the five percent purchase when we need the water?
And then also in uh, makes mention about in twenty twenty-one that we declared a drought? There's no mention of that in here, is that something that should be mentioned?
We can include that in this section that the city ha- declare a voluntary drought in twenty twenty?
Okay, this is page sixty-five. Sixty-five B. You know, I was a little bit confused with the dates that were noted. Um, um, so up above here, it says period ends October fifteenth. But then, you know, and then down below on five, what is it? Page five B, page five B, it makes, it indicates the dates of October fifteenth to Oc- October fifteenth twenty twenty-one to October fifteenth twenty twenty-nine. Oh, and then this particular day, I'm sorry, it says uh, I'm sorry here. On page sixty-five B, that first line says that the Rena period extends from October fifteenth twenty twenty to October fifteenth twenty twenty-nine? Is there, is that date correct, the first date?
Madam Mayor, that is a typo, um, this Rena cycle cover from October twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine.
All right. And then on um, page sixty-five. There's a paragraph here, let's see. Fourth paragraph, it talks about a hundred and thirty-five parcels. But then uh, there were how many um, um, sites that were 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 uh named here in the in the report, right? There, in the report, there are forty-seven sites, am I correct?
So in that same sentence, it says fifty residential sites. So what we did, we ident- identify fifty opportunity sites. And in each of those sites, there are multiple parcels. And what we do, um, we look at one site, so one site could have five parcel that we consolidate to include it as one opportunity site. And that's why there's inconsistency in number in that there's fifty sites, but then there's one hundred and thirty-five parcel. But we'll verify to make sure the parcel number is correct with the table in appendix.
Yeah, maybe make a notation that that's, you know, it includes several parcels. One site can include several parcels. Page sixty-eight. The third bullet on page sixty-eight, assisting in the development of affordable housing through land write downs, park, recreation fee reductions, or waivers or other forms of subsidies. Um, what are land write downs?
Mr. Kimball, maybe you can explain that?
Yeah, so a land write down is typically um, uh, i- if it's a city owned piece of land, um, you know, the market value maybe, you know, a hundred dollars a square foot if you had sold, sold it to a developer at market value. Um, oftentimes to uh make the finances work, cities will write down the land, meaning instead of sell it for a hundred dollars a square foot, you might sell it for fifty dollars a square foot or twenty-five dollars a square foot. Basically selling land below market value to make the finances, to subsidize the uh, a project.
And having this in here, would that require us to do that or not?
No, not at all, it's just an example of a policy decision council could make.
And then it says park and recreation fee reductions, what does that refer to?
So in that, is a safe strategy and that we could look at um potentially reducing park fees that we collect from development. So each development they come in, they require to pay for the park fee. We can look at those fee reduction. These are just some example that we're showing to the state what the city could do to promote affordable housing. Keep in mind that if we're doing any fee waiver or reduction, it will have to come to the council for approval.
Okay, this is page sixty-eight. Adequacy of sites to meet Rena. Okay, that first little paragraph. It says since Rena uses June thirtieth twenty twenty-one as baseline growth. Then, and then at the very last line, um, you know, I'm connecting the two dates here, June thirtieth twenty twenty-first uh toward the Rena numbers. Shouldn't that date be July one or is that date of June thirtieth correct? Where one ends, when does the next one start?
So June thirtieth is correct. A lot of time, we use July first as a date for collecting housing unit. But Rena starts their cycle on June thirty twenty-one, twenty-one. So we have a housing development that's approved on June thirtieth, we can count it for this cycle. But I think, believe that we've been counted on July first, right, Robert?
Yes, that's correct. This was a, just a, a, a date that we're allowed, allowed to um, as uh, take the credits for stuff that's in process, right? That hasn't had a building permit issued, but has been entitled. So we can take that as a, as a, a credit towards your required Rena for the planning cycle.
Page ninety-seven. I'm almost done. Uh, as you mentioned, a TAC on there, if you could indicate what TAC is, it's not noted.
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, we'll add that to our graph acronym list. And um, we'll also put um, the acronym after the title up there on that section.
Oh, and then there was a, there was a um, a table where they were using census data, I don't think I have the right page for that. Oh yeah, page one oh six. To explain the table, you know how you have census tract? If you could provide more description to those census tracts? Rather than a number, because they really don't mean anything to us.
Yeah, um, what we'll do, we could um, include a census map here, so it correlates with the tract number. So you'll know where these tracts are.
And then page uh, one oh nine, D twenty-four, uh, that would be figure D twenty-four. There's some percentages there, or some scores. If you maybe provide some explanation, and more additional explanation on those scores, and how, what they mean? You know, the higher the number, the better, or, you know, the worse?
Yeah, we, um, we can do that, we could um, just provide a brief explanation on higher number is good, or lower number is good.
We could see that on, on page one twelve as well. Uh, what I notice is that there's no mention of any parks, addition, you know, like, open space for residents. Is there a reason that that's not included in, in this, or that SCAG doesn't address this in, in, in these reports, or these plans?
We can, we can show, we can show the parks, but the TAC, the TAC, the TAC score uh incorporates access to amenities such as, such as parks and um, commercial. So, well, we can um, provide a better, a, a better definition of, of the TAC.
And this is page one thirty-six. Implementing programs. Uh, you know, I noticed here it says, uh, this is an existing program. This is uh, facilities affordable and special needs housing de- uh, development. This is an existing program in the city of San Fernando. Affordable and special needs housing developments facing number of hurdles, including financing, developing, development codes, and standards, and income, um, and in some cases, public opposition. And what are these hurdles?
Go ahead, you mean, so, the, cause it, it, it has in there financing, development codes, and standards, so
Yeah.
You're just asking the um, elaborate, cause I, you know, off-
Now, like, you know, why, why would they be hurdles?
Uh, well, oftentimes, it's just um, because a, a lot of times the amenities needed by special needs um, o- are, are more expensive to construct, but the market doesn't, so, but, you know, the folks that are living there can't necessarily afford to pay for more expensive housing. You know, it, it all in, in increases the, the cost of the housing, and this is the affordability of the housing. So, so um, sometime, a lot of times, the, it would price out sort of even moderate-income individuals because of the cost to build the units. It might, is, is a financial hurdle to folks that need the units to be able to get into those. Um, and then the same thing, development codes and standards. Um, you know, obviously, uh, uh, access to um, accessible, accessible units have a higher development standard because there's a higher safety need. So, again, uh, that higher development standard requires more of a, a cost to the developer, which then, you know, either gets passed through to the, uh, it makes the market cost uh, higher for the unit and less affordable.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Page uh, one thirty-eight. It says, uh, what is meant by a hundred and seventy-two deed restricted affordable, lower, and moderate rate units?
Those are the affordable housing unit that I mentioned earlier that was previously approved by the city, where they need to cored or covenant on the property, um, dedicating those unit to be affordable for fifty years? Or is it fifty-five now? Yeah, those are the deed restricted units.
And there's a hundred and thirteen affordable units within two developments, state or stated for construction during the twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-one planning period? Do we know what areas those are?
Jerry, do you know where these one hundred and thirteen affordable units are planned for construction? And also regarding the tw- twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-one planning period? That may be a typo, I think what it was, is that one hundred and thirteen affordable unit was approved during the previous cycle, but they are ready for construction during this cycle. But we'll verify that data and update the date range.
Thank you.
And if you'd like me to elaborate, yes, uh, there was a, a development, give it to Long Fair Street, that was uh, entitled some time ago. Um, and it is, we do believe it is slated for construction within this planning period.
So we'll correct that planning period date to twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-nine.
Then on page one forty, number eight. Eight, it makes mention that uh, that we have like workshops and um, materials. Has that been done? And that they've, and that um, the Fair Housing Council has been at community events? I mean, I don't, I don't know what, I'm just-
So, we probably have contract um, with the county, but where they hold their workshop and event is, I'm not sure if that's been held here in San Fernando. And if council wanted to be held here in San Fernando, that's definitely something we can work with the county on doing something more local for our residents here.
Yeah, I think that would be good, would be a good idea. Okay, page uh, one forty-three, paragraph two. Re, okay, the um, right below the bullets, it says rezoned for permit owner occupied. Can you explain what that means?
What section, I'm sorry?
On page uh, one forty-three. Underneath the bullets, that first sentence, rezoned parcels. Will permit-
Oh, um, so, that is just saying that what we're gonna do, we um, we'll have to verify that data, but um, we're looking to rezone the parcel. For example, the mixed-use overlay will allow residential unit in commercial, so that is considered rezone, where you allow residential, um, could be a cell, for cell unit or rental unit be built on the property. But for this one section, I'll have to um, check with our consultant on that, to see if we're rezoning any specific residential parcel. My assumption is we don't.
And then on that same paragraph, the last line, once rezoned, uh, the site's inventory can accommodate an estimated one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven units? Is that un- figure correct?
I will have to look into that, um, and get back to you.
And then the, the paragraph right under that, can you uh, explain that?
Paragraph right after, in accordance with government code, at least fifty percent of the city
Yes.
remaining low-income Rena need. So that is just um, state requirement that we need to accommodate lower-income housing on these sites, and we need to um, have two hundred and seventy-three units. So part of our um, site analysis, I define as opportunity site, like Robert mentioned earlier, the first step was to identify these low-income unit first, before we start looking at the moderate and above-moderate income. Did that answer your question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, thank you, thank you, sorry. Page one forty-six, number seventeen. Density bonus here. Affordable housing city council. The one, the one hundred percent, it says something about one hundred percent um, density bonus. Yeah, AB seventeen sixty-three, density bonus for one hundred percent affordable housing. What does that mean to us?
So one hundred percent affordable housing mean that you're getting a development project that's a hundred percent affordable for lower-income housing. And under state density bonus law, they have different category for very low, low, moderate income. These are just state law that we have to update our density bonus to comply with. Where in state law, if you have a hundred percent density affordable housing for a lower-income household, they have to go through a different, more streamlined process for approval.
Thank you. And um, yeah, I just wanted to point out that the last availability site that was noted was the Pavarillo of a Sissy Retreat House over at uh, fifteen sixteen Woodworth Street. I was kind of surprised to see that one on the list. And um, and if possible, if we can get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I, that's all I have for now. Your next, uh, next item for you?
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next part of our presentation, Robert?
One second, let me get this thing back up. Okay, so now moving on to the environmental justice um, section of the, of the agenda. So, okay, in, in addition to the, the requirements regarding the housing element, the state also has requirements on incorporating environmental justice policies into the general plan. So I had mentioned before, anytime two or more housing, sorry, uh, general plan elements are updated, then you need to make considerations for environmental justice policies, or incorporate environmental justice policies and analysis. This was pursuant to State Bill one thousand, which was passed in twenty sixteen, that requires cities to have low-income communities burdened by pollution to prepare environmental policies for the general plan. Environmental justice is defined by the state as fair treatment and meaningful involvement of people of all races, cultures, incomes, as part of the development implementation of environmental policy laws. So this is the State Bill um, environmental justice uh, passed twenty sixteen. Uh, and it's basically, in a nutshell, identified the disadvantaged communities and develop objectives and policies to improve those areas. So in addition, uh, sorry, so I, here are the, here is a map of one of the indicators, right? So how do I identify disadvantaged communities? So we look at Calenviron Screen as being one of these um, these indicators, right? So those areas with the highest scores are those areas that are most impacted. Um, and the objective of environmental justice is to reduce the health risks to these communities, promote civic engagement, and prioritize improvements and programs for these disadvantaged communities. So the focus is to improve the existing conditions for these disadvantaged um, c- communities. So the city of San Fernando has four census tract. Three of these four census tracts are considered disadvantaged, as defined by the state using the Calenviron Screen Data Tool. That was that tool that I showed on the previous slide. Calenviron Screen ranks census tracts throughout California based on twenty environmental health and socioeconomic data, uh, data points. Disadvantaged communities are those within the highest twenty-five percent of tracts across California. So they do that analysis across all census tract in them, and uh, identify the high, the tw- the highest twenty-five percent. So here are some of the indicators that are, are assessed during this environmental justice. This graph, graphic on the right is a representation of which characters the state recommends local governments like San Fernando look at to determine which environmental conditions are present that harm community health, and which po- pollution characteristics create more burden. Of these characteristics, the ones present in San Fernando are listed in the bullets. So these are the ones on the, on the, on the left-hand side. Um, San Fernando's poor air quality can be largely attributed to the city's proximity to high-traffic freeways and roadways, such as the I, the I-five, the two-ten, and the, and, and Highway one eighteen. In addition to pollution burden, San Fernando population experience high rates of poverty, housing burden, health issues associated with asthma, and low birth rate. So these are some of the indicators that are present in the community. Other, other barriers include lower rates of education, educational attainment than other communities. Eleven percent of people over the age of twenty-five have a bachelor's degree or higher. So the eleven, eleven percent live in poverty, which ranks the city in the top fifteen percent of all cities in California. Seventeen percent of the households do not have anyone that speak English very well. Slightly higher unemployment rates than Los Angeles. And housing burden is very high. Over sixty percent of renters spend more than thirty percent on housing. So that was, I think, the, the mayor had asked that question earlier today. So we'll go ahead, that's a statistic that we should probably add back into the housing element, so we'll add that. Uh, there's slightly higher unemployment rates in the city of Los Angeles, I guess I, I said that already, and a higher rate of overcrowding and severe over, overcrowding than the general SCAG region, with twenty-four percent of red, rental units occupied by more than one person per room and, per room, and eleven percent occupied by more than one and a half, one point five persons per room. So policy and, and programs. So for environmental justice to address um, these issues, uh, we uh, the, the consultant team broke off these policy and programs into four distinct themes, civic and community engagement, access to public facilities and healthy foods, exposure to pollution, and safe and sanitary homes. And they, these are some of the select um, policies that, that address or go after um, you know, uh, environmental justice issues. Eco-lul engagement, you know, this one might seem strange, but tree canopies, right? So heat is, and, and overheating, and um, you know, uh, climate change is, is a very real uh, issue, and uh, tree canopies can help alleviate, basically create safeguards, you know, natural tree, natural key, tree canopy. Uh, of course, pollution reduction and, and housing rights, which ties back to the housing element. Select programs would be public, public campaigns to create informational campaigns focused on informing all residents, and especially those from disadvantaged communities, about the, the status, impacts, and safety of East San Fernando Valley light rail projects. But that would be an example of, of a polluter-based initiative. Urban forestry programs, home maintenance funding, multi-family inspection program. So this was a program that the city has done in the past, and something that we're recommending again, moving forward. And this is really to get at that, the, the quality and, and of the housing stock and, and the tenure of the, of the residents. So that's a real quick, basically, environmental justice and how we're weaving those in to, to attain those, those, you know, address those, those conditions, and try to draft policies that help those disadvantaged community to improve their situation, their living conditions. So I will pause now to take any questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to hold my comments until my colleague who has an expertise in environmental justice. Thank you.
Councilmember Montañez?
Okay, so, Robert, clearly an area that needs a lot of work. I think you should sit with Matt and Nick and just go through all the things that we are doing on climate resilience and change. The city has established some really good things on, on water infiltration rates truly that are going to be, you know, transsetting in many ways to maintain, you know, our water independence, something that, you know, our, our mayor, former mayor has, has brought up very strongly today, the importance of San Fernando maintaining its, its local water independence because of how expensive it would be on residents' repairs if we have to purchase Metropolitan Water District, and the city is doing stuff, has gotten funding that should be acknowledged and stated in the report to capture more groundwater and address its water infrastructure needs, and is going after even additional resources to, to study what we could do in that area. The extreme heat, it does not, at all, is not weird, as you said, for us. It's a priority, a top priority for the city. I mean, has been for this council for a couple of years now, because we are literally ground zero for extreme heat. You look at all the, you know, just the analysis on, that have been done on extreme heat, and you will see San Fernando is top on the list for experiencing doubling, tripling of days that are ninety-five degrees or hotter as a very real, serious public health threat. Okay, so this environmental justice element needs to speak to the public health threats of extreme heat and not addressing the ozone and pollution issues, because those lead to, and we have research on this, to literally increase mortality and morbidity rates, asthma, cancer, you name it, because of that high pollution burden that exists here in San Fernando. So that needs to be prioritized. Why is that important? Because as you continue to build and build out, you take out a significant tree canopy that exists on private properties. So when you're building, you have to make sure that there is actually policy set to be able to address cooling in a community, especially here in, in the city. And you have to be able to address proper landscaping needs to allow for infiltration because of our groundwater reliability and independence. So that needs to be highlighted significantly more. And again, more important than anything is, is, I think, public health, right? People have to be healthy, and these policies need to be stated in there on the environmental justice pieces of it. The educational attainment has to be stated what it is for what it is, right? Low educational attainment, we're having a real problem, as we saw, decreasing wages. You know, that was a significant drop in the last ten years of people's wages. That educational attainment, low levels, has to also be brought in, because those are, again, investments into the community that have to happen. And more responsibility from the school district and other schools, you know, in town to be able to help us address the educational attainment level so people can be able to have better jobs, hire, you know, academic achievement, and do better in, in our community. So I would like for that to also be, you know, highlighted in, in this justice component. And in the environmental, you know, justice, it's the economic justice arguments as well, right? Which we have talked about as significant issues, so people can afford to pay for their, their housing, whether they're going to rent or they're going to purchase. The economic and environmental justice components are, are really important. So we are, the city is, has been very progressive, forward-thinking. We have plans for a climate action plan with some funds that have been, you know, have been given. We are applying for additional resources, as I said, in urban forestry management planning on increased water infiltration, looking at water sustainability, independence, reliability, landscape transformations. We're, we're doing a lot, so please spend more time on this. And I think, you know, just, just some time with, like, with our directors, with our city manager and our director of public works, because you'll see that, that there is some very forward-thinking work that's been, that's been done here. So this has a lot to be built out. And, and I just really encourage you to, you know, come to our Green City Committee, of which the Vice Mayor and myself sit on. We could go through a conversation with you if you want to as well, so that you could enhance the section to reflect what the city is really doing and really that the city has.
That all? Councilmember Montañez?
That's it, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballin?
Well, I do agree, this is a very important piece that has to be looked at very carefully. And education is so key, and eleven percent, such a disappointing number. But I think we have a responsibility to increase that number. And by responsibility, I mean working with the school district, the colleges, and seeing what we can do with the families. And I want us to remember the trades, that's very important. And it's really unfortunate that, that isn't offered quite as it was in the past, and we really, really need it today. So I, I don't have any questions, other than I think Councilmember Montañez covered it quite well. And I'm very sure that the mayor, who's on the Ad-Hoc Committee, will also cover it very well. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez, are you ready?
Yes, and thank you. I agree, I think Councilmember Montañez covered it very well. So I think it was great that she went first. I also wanted to ask Robert and Nick, you know, there's so much, I, I think it's great that you can go to the Green Ad-Hoc and learn more, but where in the plan is there an opportunity to capture how much resources we're already putting forward to accomplishing the goals that we've outlined, in addition to how much resources we are requiring of our own city budget to reach the goals that we've outlined? And that kind of comes back to the, you know, what we're doing versus how we're doing it. All of the goals we outline are definitely more than one staff person to accomplish. I'm just curious about, one, where we can capture it to illustrate kind of the cost to the city, and also to our plan to actually effectuate these goals.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, you know, and, and an excellent question. You know, obviously, the more policies, and, and it's great, I think, it's, you know, we're following the leadership of the council on, on going after all these, these grant programs and, and making sure that we're protecting our residents. We always have to balance, you know, how we're going to implement those. Some, oftentimes, we hire consultants to assist us with implementing policies and programs. When it gets to sort of a critical mass, then we come to council to really get, you know, should we add a, a position, you know, a sustainability position, or something that will work with staff? So, you know, I, I think, I think what's really helpful for, for staff, at least through this process and through all these council meetings when we get feedback on environmental justice, it just helps kind of solidify the picture and the policy, and so that we can start making better recommendations to council on how we, you know, implement these policies. So the policies are, are the first step. Implementing the policies are sort of the second step. And so, you know, I, I think as we go through this process, in, in many of the other processes, every time we, you know, we, we realize we need to put more resources, including assistance to the city manager that will help you writing, you know, writing grants. And, and I think we'll need to start looking at, not just programmatic grants, but grants that also can fund staff members so that we can implement these. You know, it's hard to really pinpoint and put a number on, on something at, at this point. I mean, really, I think what we need to do is, is get a good sense of what priorities, and I think we're going to be going through that, that process over the next month with council and strategic planning, what will be those, those, those priorities over the next year. And then we can, you know, staff can do, put a, you know, a better, sort of a finer point on that pencil, on what exactly we would, resources we'd need to implement those. This is related to an eight-year, an eight-year, you know, program. So, you know, it's sort of, these are kind of the high-level, the high-level policies. And I think what we'll need to do and, and use these as kind of guiding principles each year as we're going through that priority and goal-setting process, so that we know which of these, you know, we're going to put resources toward funding, you know, in the upcoming year. So, you know, we look forward to using these as guiding principles, you know, in each of the strategic, each of the goal-setting exercises we go through during the budget.
I think those are my questions.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you. I'd like to begin by just underscoring something that was mentioned before, but the bear's repeating. The people of San Fernando bear a disproportionate share of the negative environmental consequences from industry, from commercial operations, and it's just not fair. And that's all we're looking for, is fair treatment. And I think policymakers in proposing rules around environmental justice are empowering us to do that, to level the playing field, so to speak. I noticed that other cities have created a standalone environmental justice element as part of their general plan. I would like to do that in San Fernando, and I think my colleagues would probably be supportive of that. Is there a reason why we're not making environmental justice element a standalone portion of the general plan?
Uh, yeah, actually, that was discussed during the budget, the budget hearings last, you know, during this current budget cycle. We actually, we did discuss, you know, an environmental justice element and potentially, potentially funding one, similar to the housing element. I, I believe the housing element costs about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that were, is grant-funded. We didn't have, we haven't identified a fundamental justice element. So that is ultimately the goal as directed by staff, I mean, sorry, of staff, as directed by city council, is to get, you know, to create that standalone environmental justice. We're just working through, you know, piecing together funding sources for that.
Um, I would also like to add, like Mr. Kimball said, so our next step, we did get fifty thousand dollars from South Cal Gas to do the Climate Action Plan. Now, that's not enough to do the entire plan, but we're going to do phase one, that we're going to identify inventory and emission, so we can go for state grant. There are a lot of grants that SCAG is offering right now to address environmental justice. So we want to couple that with the Climate Action Plan to cover both at the same time.
Okay, so suffice to say, we don't have to wait until the next housing plan update in order to implement an EJ element?
That's correct. We're not going to wait for the next housing element. We are going to pursue some grant from SCAG to prepare for environmental justice.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think it's important for folks to understand. Being, being that we cannot create one as of yet, or, you know, we're in the early stages of it, I agree that these policies should probably be reinforced throughout, you know, what we see here in terms of more detail on how we're seeking to reduce pollution exposure, access to healthy foods, you know, physical activity and civic engagement, even things like redirecting truck routes and so forth. And so I think that in the absence of creating its, its own kind of element as part of the plan, I think, you know, we need to do a little bit more in terms of creating just more, you know, words on the page, as, as simple as that, you know, to let folks know that we're taking these things seriously, and they are intertwined with housing. And it's important for us to take positive steps towards that direction to mitigate some of these negative environmental consequences. Are there any cleanup sites in San Fernando, or anything that we need to worry about in terms of cleanup?
Cleanup, you mean as hazardous site, brown site?
Right, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. Robert, Jerry, do you know if there are any? We can look into it.
Yes, there's, yeah, there, in the next section on the safety element, there is a slide around hazardous materials. So I have some notes that Rickon provided me that I can kind of step through some of the key features of the safety element in the next section.
Great, great, yeah. And, you know, obviously, I agree as well in terms of urban forestry and taking, you know, a very good index of, of where we're at in terms of tree canopy and so forth. And maybe, you know, spend some time thinking about how we can help educate folks on what to do with hazardous waste as well, and batteries and things like that, motor oil, et cetera. I know that's not necessarily something that comes to the top of mind as part of, you know, environmental justice, but I think it's super important. So we'll follow up with you, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll spend a little bit more time, and I think, you know, we'll have a better draft in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I don't have anything to add. I just, you know, everything's been said by council and, and the importance of the environmental justice component of the, of the plan.
Mr. Kimball?
Uh, with no further comments on that, we will move on to the last section, which is the.
Public safety, I mean, safety element, sorry. Robert? Hey, Robert, you're on mute.
Okay, sorry. So, yeah, similar to environmental justice, the safety element, that safety element is also very heavily regulated by the state. It must be updated alongside the, the housing element now. So that's a new law, that when you update the housing element, you have to update the, the, the safety element. The city's safety element was last updated in nineteen eighty-seven, and it addressed seismic, geologic, mudslides, landslides, flooding, urban fire, and hazardous waste risk. The state requires that safety elements also consider now climate change as a hazard. Climate change is expected to show increases in temperature, more severe storms, increase in extreme heat events, changes in participate, precipitation patterns, extended drought conditions, and increase, increasing wildfire risk. So again, the safety element, current safety element, has, has these six, six items here on the, on the left, and then the, the new hazard to assess, extreme heat, degraded air quality also, severe storm, and wind, drought, wildfire, and of course, vector-borne diseases. So some of the current conditions. So current conditions, we, assessing different hazard zones. So I know that a, a council member mentioned or asked about.
So I know that a council member mentioned or asked about hazard zones, and this is one of them, right? The, the dam inundation zones. There's a dam inundation hazard. If the clamor dam suffers a complete failure, this is unlikely to occur because the dam is normally maintained at one quarter of its capacity and no longer allowed to reach full capacity. So there, it's already been a mitigated risk. Minimal flood risk and pecan wash from heavy rain events. So just looking at the, this historic, and there has been some, some conditions that have changed that, that since this impact to the city of San Fernando. The, here's a, an example of liquefaction and seismic risk on the left-hand side. I know that we had talked about earlier about the, the different references of the faults, the main fault being the Sierra Madre Fault and the Northridge Area Fault to the south of, of the city. And there are also faults to the north, but the Sierra Madre Fault is probably the most, in the most close proximity to, to the city. Liquification also, there's some potential in the city and, and you, this is depicted in the right-hand map, so a small portion of the, of the city is impacted by liquefaction, but a majority of the city is out of the liquefaction areas. Hazardous material, so this is what we were just talking about. So the, there are 17 sites within the, within the city that have been identified as either being permitted underground storage tanks or leaking underground storage tanks or even a cleanup site. So there are a couple of occurrences there, and of course, there is also, you know, the, the prevalence of chemicals on the roadway, so transportation-related spills are also of, of a concern because there's some major thoroughfares through the city. So we had talked earlier about climate change, climate change being a, a, a new hazard to assess, right? So we're anticipating average annual temperatures to increase by five degrees by the end of the cen- the century. Extreme heat days are expected to increase by four to seven degrees. The number of extreme heat days may go up from three days per year to 33 days per year by the end of the century. And a definition of an extreme heat day is temperatures of 102 degrees or more. And with higher temperatures, we can expect we're sitting near quality. So this was another key environmental justice-related issue was the heat days, and it is now also a safety element. So that's sort of where the two kind of, you know, the safety element, environmental justice and housing element kind of cross. Definitely a, a concern. And so here are a couple of, of policies. These are just a couple of select policies. More policies are in the draft, public safety element, but, you know, some of the, these policies are just, you know, thorough due diligence on the plan checks, you know, maintaining and implementing specific traffic routes. I think Vice Mayor Pacheco had mentioned that, you know, maybe maintaining specific travel routes for that. Establish resilience hubs as a way of providing additional turns to vulnerable populations, so the cooling centers, and then building efficiency, right? Encourage water and energy efficiency in buildings. So this goes back to the housing element, also is the rehabilitation of housing stock. So again, another safety element policy that would tie directly back to the housing element. And, and a couple of select programs, you know, a, a climate change risk assessment and emergency evacuation scenarios, right? So that's something new to, to assess. There are new guidelines as it relates to single ingress egress neighborhoods. I don't think the city has many issues with that, but any, any area that has 30 units or more has to have at least two points of ex-ingress egress. And then air quality enforcement, right? Implementing emission reduction standards. You know, so, so just taking some proactive policies and programs, implementing programs to, to help the, the circumstances. And that's pretty much the overview. I'm here to take questions. I, again, this has been sponsored, I mean, this has been prepared by Rincon, so I'll try to answer the questions to my ability.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Councilmember Rodriguez?
I, I do appreciate the, that environmental justice component that we talked about, our emphasis and safety element. I just had one question that goes for both the safety element and everything we've already gone through about the goals that we've set. Are there any other innovative, you know, goals that other cities have implemented or, or that you all look at prior to suggesting these goals?
Thinking about additional programs that I, I guess I'm not too clear on.
I, I'm wondering for the goals that have been developed and presented and have, you know, gone through public review and our, and our planning commission, is there any other analysis or review of other people's plans or pursuits in environmental justice or things for the safety element that I think just are, are especially innovative?
Yeah, I mean...
Like the standard recycling of these plans.
Yeah, no, I mean, so Rincon did, does these on a, on a bunch of communities, so they take their, their, their knowledge of the subject matter and, and, and do a best fit for, for the city of San Fernando. As far as like a list of innovative features, I would have to defer to them, so I could definitely follow up with, with a, a summary of, of, of those programs.
Yeah, I think that'd be great. I think an understanding why or, or why not certain things do make it and don't. I think, you know, just everything that goes into these is an opportunity to be more creative and innovative, we should pursue those. That concludes my questions, but not thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Montañez?
I'm curious your data sources on this, Robert. If you could add those, or if you, if you know them right now, just curious where you got the data.
Wh- which data were you inquiring about?
I mean, the, like, the extreme heat data, as an, as an example.
Right, I, again, I would have to defer to, to Rincon on, on the extreme heat data. I do know where the, you know, the, the flood and the, and the dam inundation comes from.
Okay, so maybe if you guys could cite the source on these?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. In, in the, in the document, it does, it does cite the sources. It's just for these slides, we, we probably should have done that too. We should have included that.
Yeah, um, I, and, and I mean, they, they would know Dr. David Eisenman at UCLA, the Fielding School of Public Health. He's been studying, he and the team have really been studying the issue of wildfires. And that, actually, until I started looking at the research, didn't realize how serious of a risk that is for us in San Fernando, and that became prevalent with the fires that we had just in recent years that surrounded the valley and really just across here in Silver area. So pretty, pretty frightening things, actually, on exposure to babies, young children and the elderly because of what happens to the air quality during these wildfires. So I'd love to, if you don't already have a relationship with him, or Rincon should, but if you don't, I would really like to connect you to him. And then Doc, Dr. Alex Hall on the extreme heat has very detailed maps and analysis that he's done on looking at the, this area in particular on the extreme heat days as well. And I think that'll give you, give us in this report some really good things to look at for the next, you know, 25 years, 50 years, 100 years, right? That could really help within the planning that we're doing.
And that fire study, can you say?
Dr. David Eisenman, and he's at the UCLA Fielding School of Public Health, and they're doing public equity work, health equity, I'm sorry, work specifically on wildfires in San Fernando, the Northeast Valley is one of the communities that they're studying. Just truly amazing group of professors, researchers there, and I think that it's a good relationship, I would just in general, for you guys to have for other communities who may be working on as well, especially the Northeast Valley and San Fernando. And they'll go into these populations identified in San Fernando. You'll see that in the research, that the elderly, well, quote-unquote, but, you know, people over 60, 65, are very vulnerable populations. And that's important because of what we were seeing on the numbers of what the trend is in San Fernando. And so I just want to make sure that we're highlighting, we don't highlight here, you know, that age 60, 60, 50 or 65 plus as a vulnerable population, but it does gets, it gets spelled out very specifically in this research, both on wildfires and extreme heat. And especially Latinos, of which the population is in San Fernando. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballin?
Just one point, with the extreme heat in San Fernando, it's just getting worse and worse every year, and the summers seem to be, just takes forever. So one of my concerns here, and I don't know how we can address it here, or maybe we can address it in a, at hot committee, is there's, and I don't know the percentage of houses that are quite old in the city that do not have insulation, and the summers in those homes are just horrible. So I don't know, Nick, where would we address that? That, that is a big problem in the city.
If I...
Go right ahead.
Who was talking?
Oh, I, I was, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. Safety element policy S 10.3, building efficiency, I think that gets, it's sort of out that, it, it's, the policy is to encourage water and energy efficiency in buildings throughout, through upgrading of appliances and building infrastructure retrofits to best prepare for fluctuating peak demand and extreme heat events. Is that, is that kind of what you're getting at? I, I think it does. You're talking about retrofits for, for houses to basically make them more hardened, I guess, for lack of a better term, more comfortable and resilient to the, the heat events.
Have you ever lived in a house that's not insulated and it's 120 degrees?
I have, yes.
Yeah, not, not very comfortable.
Yeah, and I think some of those, some of those, so again, the rehab loan program that we'll be talking about in an upcoming council meeting, the whole purpose of that is actually to bring, is to offer a low-cost loan to, to folks that would need it to bring the house up to code, so the existing house up to the code, and one of the, you know, one of the things, insulation is, is one of the, the code areas, I believe that they would, would be eligible, that folks could get a, a very low cost loan to, to make those upgrades.
That's exactly what I wanted to hear. I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you. Could you go to the slide with the hazarded, hazardous waste locations? I'm ashamed to say that, I didn't realize there were so many, 17. What exactly do we do with this information? Is this just for future projects to know that there were spills there, or what is actionable from this info?
So this... So this information is good for us, as city staff, it is also good for developer when they come in to develop the site, they know that these are contaminated site, and they have to remediate, and it's a lengthy process. Is, a lot of these sites, the property owners probably already know it already and, or must have our plans. They also probably working with the Department of Toxic and Substain Control for cleaning up the site. But for our purpose is really just for our knowledge to know when development comes in, we need to make sure that they have clearance from DTSC, Department of Toxic and Substain Control, for a clean site for development.
So these red boxes are currently leaking underground storage tanks?
I'm not sure if they're leaking. Some of, so state identified these sites as previous contaminated leaking site. They're not cleaned up yet. That's my understanding, Robert, unless you have more information on that?
And just to, I know it's really hard to see on here, but, so the red sites, if there's an X on it, which all of the red sites have an X on it, it says completed, case closed.
Oh, yeah, they do have X's on them.
So, and even some of the green ones have X's on them, so just, this is...
They're not currently, okay. That was a little concerning. All right, secondly, are there any industry, commercial, et cetera, that we should be concerned about in terms of either more pollution than usual, or like, this sounds crazy, but like explosion, explosion potential, like, you know, in Philadelphia, they had like an oil refinery blow up in Texas every once in a while, there's, you know, things that just, are there anything like that in San Fernando or near San Fernando that we like highlight in, in something like this? Refineries, or I don't know what? Hopefully not.
Uh, yeah, let me, let me circle back with, yeah, with...
But those types of things do go into this type of analysis, or probably? We'll figure it out, we'll figure it out, no problem. Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and yield the rest of my time, and we'll, we'll follow up with you at a future time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, I kind of went through this one like I did the housing element, so bear with me again. On page eight dash two, the second bullet indicates operating a cooling center at Recreation Park in San Fernando when temperatures exceed 100 degrees. Mr. Kimball, don't we use Las Palmas Park? Or do we also use San Fernando, I mean, the Recreation?
Yeah, both San Fernando and Rec Park, sorry, both Rec Park and Las Palmas are used as cooling centers. We don't always open both, but, but both of them are, are sort of qualified.
Maybe we should add Las Palmas Park there?
Yeah, we can add Las Palmas, we'll do an or Recreation Park.
All right. And then we don't make mention that we have a disaster plan, should that be included in this section?
We can include that in there. I thought it was in here somewhere when I was reading earlier, but we'll include it.
Thank you. Eight point six, page, yeah, eight point six, eight six. No, not that one. Eight dash four, this is the peak load water demand. Existing water supplies available to the city include local groundwater extracted from Silver Mar groundwater basin. The city also has access to imported water from Metropolitan Water District as an emergency connection and from the city of Los Angeles to be assessed only accessed only in extreme emergencies. Do we have that? I, I didn't, I didn't know we had a connection to LA, yeah? LA says to the city of Los Angeles, there's a connection and from the city of Los Angeles.
There, I know there is one with MWD, I'll have to defer to Matt if he is still on the Zoom to chime in. There he is.
Yes, we do have an emergency connection with LEDWP. I don't know when the city last used it, it's been a very, I think it's been quite a while, and it's not, it's not very cheap. I think that's why we, I think we, we tend to use, when we've had to, we've used the, the connection with MWD because it's more affordable. But we do have, we do have an emergency connection in the case we did need to, in an emergency, use water from LEDWP.
Thank you. And then on eight, dash eight, eight point eight. There's one section here, where is it? Oh, up above, it's page eight dash eight, and it's the very top. It's actually eight point six in this item. It says MWD... It says MD can meet full service demands of its member agencies and existing supplies from 2025 through 2045 during the normal years. So when they say this, is that including the additional family units, those that will live in there? Is it including the, our water needs at that time? Is it based on the current population, or with the additional?
Yes, so when MDWT, what they do, they do their water assessment for increased population for their member agency, so that, based on that statement, it says that they have service for all the member agency, and there, we could assume that that could include the new units that SCAG is putting within our region.
Should we assume?
We can verify that with MDWT, but typically, when they do their water assessment, they do do projection, population projection, to determine if they have enough water or not.
I think it would be good that we could confirm that.
Okay.
And then, you know, the map that you've got up here on the, on the screen, I don't think there's a map of that in the, in this safety element.
Yeah.
Be included?
We could include that for the hazardous material site, that would be helpful, because it does talk about the seventeen site.
Yes. Then, page eight, eight dash ten. On the population here, someplace, I'm sorry, I didn't do a good job on this one here, but it said the population was, a population just over twenty-four thousand is the notation, and isn't our population twenty-five thousand? Just over twenty-five thousand?
We'll confirm that population. If it's over twenty-four thousand, or if it's over twenty-five.
Thank you. Then eight dash twelve, pollutant exposure, air quality and water quality. It, it mentions, all this says that we have the worst, some of the worst air quality in the state. San Fernando experiences some of the worst air quality in the state. San Fernando experiences more diesel PM than eighty percent of other California census trucks. What is that diesel PM? Doesn't.
PM is particulate matter.
And what does that mean to us?
It's like, the soot, this was just, basically, it's the soot that comes out of a tailpipe of a car, or diesel, you know, that's, the exhaust comes out of a car, little, little tiny particles, particulates.
And you'll probably see it on your landscape plan, on your plan at home.
And then it says, in addition, in addition, okay, under that same one, the, the third paragraph in that pollutant exposure quality, it says, in addition, two of the four census trucks within the city are exposed to drinking water pollutants identified based on water contaminants and water quality violations that are sometimes found when taking drinking water samples. Is this correct?
We'll have to verify if we have received any water quality violation, we'll check with our public works director.
Because I haven't heard anything that, you know, our water's pollutant, or there's any issues with it.
We'll check if there isn't, we'll strike that out.
Thank you. Eight dash twelve. Oh, yeah, there's, I guess, just one word there, the eight dash twelve, where they mention about the distance, half a mile of parks and beaches and another space. We don't have any beaches. So that word should be removed. You know, and then eight dash twenty-seven. About signage and the, that's S thirteen. About signage and the visible, clear, legible signs and street numbers. That's something that we don't have. A lot of the street numbers you can't see. And so I don't know, you know, I know I had mentioned this to Mr. Kimball a while back, you know, I know that many years ago, sometimes they would come around our homes to paint the numbers onto, you know, our numbers on the curb, and we haven't done that, or no one's come around. I don't know, it's because they haven't approached us, or how that works, but, and then we'd pay, or give a donation. I don't, you know, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that the numbers are not clear. And sometimes they're not on the homes, or they're not on the mailbox, and then they're not clear on the curb as well. And then eight dash twenty-seven, says environmental justice, S fourteen. It says, San Fernando community is meaningfully engaged in public decision-making processes, has equitable access to public facilities, healthy food, clean air and water. So kind of like, you know, I mean, over here, it says that we don't have clean water, but yet here, we're here, say we have clean water. It's like I'm reading two different things in the report.
Madam Mayor, that is the goal. So the element shows that we don't have clean water, and the goal is to get clean water, and then below the goal, we have objective and policies that is, that's going to come for council for consideration on how to implement them further, just like you mentioned earlier about signage. One of the policy is to require residents to have visible sign, so now we have to develop a program to get there.
So then how is it we don't have clean water? Can you explain that?
Well, the, the goal, so again, we have to confirm that, but this is, these are laying out the goals. So the statement isn't being made that we do have clean water, or that we do have equitable access to public facilities, and we do have clean air and water. It's saying that's our goal to get there. We may not be there right now. These policies underneath are the ways to get there.
And then there's, my question is, if we're increasing the population, would we be required to have like a fire department and/or an ambulance, ambulance service? I don't know if it needs to be addressed in here, but just something that I was just concerned about. And that's all I have, Mr. Kimball.
I believe that.
We have one more section, and that is this sequel analysis, that's the environmental document that was prepared to address this housing element and safety element, essentially that the city prepared mitigating negative declaration, meaning that potential impact, environmental impact were identified, but there are mitigation measures that are in place to reduce those impact to not, to be less than significant. Robert, can you put up the slide to show the six topics that we're talking about? It's getting late, I think we could go through this quick, and then let council ask questions on the MND, if you have any. Essentially, is, under state law, under the California Environment Quality Act, we have to evaluate the policy we have in place here that we're proposing, to see if there is going to be any new environmental impact. The environmental consultant has looked at it and compared to the housing element that we have previously, and what's being done now, is no significant change to result in a significant environmental impact, and that's why the MND is done. In the MND, they look at these six topics as aesthetic, biological resources, cultural resources, geology and soil, hazardous and hazard material, and tribal cultural resources. So these six topics were focused in the MND, and mitigation measures are proposed to address any potential impacts. Councilmember Rodriguez.
No additional questions, Madam, thank you.
Councilmember Montanias.
I'm concerned about this one, because we're talking about such high density increase. So I am concerned on the geology soils, and some of the biological resources, because of what we were talking about, right, less permeable surfaces for infiltration. You know, you combine the ADUs and the SB nine, SB ten, and no requirements for landscaping, and impacts on extreme heat, so I really think that we should, in planning, go through a more comprehensive sequel analysis of this.
Councilmember Montanias, I can answer the question about your concern about the biological and cultural resources. So the MND did not identify impact, because the MND did not look at specific development site. When any of these potential site comes in for development, we will do an environmental review for each of the sites, and one of the requirement for them is, if a vacant site come in, we will ask for a biological resources report, soil report, cultural resources report, prior to any groundbreaking, prior to even entitlement approval, and then we'll evaluate the potential impact then. For geological and soil, is standard requirement as part of planning application, as well as building permit, they're not going to get a building permit until they have a geological report that shows development can happen. As for groundwater infiltration, landscape requirement, when project comes in, they will be required to develop in compliance with our landscape requirement, and any low impact development requirement that will be put in place. So I hope that answered your question.
But I also think that Vice Mayor Pacheco brought up some really good points on the hazardous sites, that I myself agree with him, I wasn't really aware of all those sites, and those are pretty significant numbers in areas that are being identified, you know, for potential housing. So I just think that there's enough, you know, with, with the proposed two thousand residential units, which is even scarier, that we're not just talking about, you know, converting to commercial or industrial, but these are actually residential units that we're talking about, that there's enough, given, you know, our, our existing environmental justice and hazardous site and materials reports, to, to actually not negate a more comprehensive environmental analysis and review of the, of the proposal.
Councilmember Montanias, as for the hazardous site, so when a hazardous site come in for development, most likely we'll be looking at an EIR, or Environmental Impact Report, because they will identify if it's a hazardous site, how that site's been mitigated to clean, clean soil for residential development. It will be a higher standard when they come in for residential development, especially higher if it was affordable housing. So those issue will be addressed in the environmental document for when the project comes in for development.
And if I may, just to add a little flavor to that, so I, I do, I do want to make, first assure council that this, any sequel analysis as part of preparing the housing element, does not take place of any environmental analysis that comes forward for any specific project that may, you know, come forward in the future. I'd also mention, you know, maybe we can come back, we're not asking to adopt the MND or anything tonight, so, you know, we can always, at the, this is again, coming back to council, potentially in March, after it goes through more durations, goes through city, the planning process, you know, with, maybe we can, you know, bring, bring forward sort of a little, a better explanation, more thorough explanation of sort of exactly what this kind of sequel analysis means, we can get a little more in depth to that in, in conjunction with all of the other kind of environmental comments that we've received tonight.
Okay, I appreciate that, Nick, that we'll go deeper into this, and not, you know, because I don't agree that, with the comment that it's less than significant, given the conversations that we've been having. So thank you. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballin.
I have no questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
No further comments on this, we'll follow up at a future time. Thank you, Mayor.
And I don't have any additional comments. Thank you.
Now we're done?
Now we're done.
Okay, thank you. Now we have finished this item for the staff, and staff's finished the presentation on item, item number one, so we can move on to the next item on the agenda.
And, next item is, let me go here. Staff communications, including commission updates?
I do not believe there are any, any staff communication for tonight, other than we do have our regular city council meeting a week from tonight on February seventh.
General City Council Board Member comments and liaison updates. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I just want to take a moment to thank all of you for engaging with the SAR on the homeless system, and then each had an opportunity to write feedback. So thank you for taking the time to do that, and then of course, just thank you to the staff for this evening, and to our consultants for joining us.
Councilmember Montanias.
I echo that, that I, I very much appreciated the very comprehensive and robust questions. I learned a lot from all of you. Thank you very much. It helped me, I think, better understand what's being proposed. So thank you to, you know, all my colleagues and the team for spending this time with us today. And, and I also, Camika, you know, this is like the first full meeting with us, so it was really good to just have you there as our, as our director, answering questions, and again, welcome officially, once again, to, to, to the team as our, as a director of community development. And then I wanted to say thank you to the council, the city, the community, for the incredible support at the San Fernando Tree People, NFL Green tree planting that we had a couple Saturdays ago. Everybody loved it. So as we go into Super Bowl, you know, weekend soon, you know, I just, I loved it, because it just really brought, I think, our country's love, and especially San Fernando's love for like, sports and football and trees and more than anything, community. Like, it just brought it together so beautifully, and so I appreciate, you know, the, you know, Madam Mayor, and, you know, all, all of you, all, all my colleagues, everybody on the council, that, that incredible support that you provide to San Fernando, and it was really fun and beautiful. And so I just want to thank everybody for, you know, for, for being present and, and supporting like these incredible greening efforts. And that's it. You know, keep staying safe as we, you know, as we see the numbers kind of hopefully calming down a little bit with, with Omicron and COVID, and, yeah, encourage everybody in our community to just continue to be really safe.
Thank you. Councilmember Ballin.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Robert, I see that you're still on, and I, I felt like you were on the hot seat a little bit, but welcome to San Fernando City Council, and we're looking forward to your next presentation. And I do agree with Councilmember Montanias, I really wish the other representatives would have been on, but I do, I have to say, I do understand, we made, we scheduled several meetings, and they just didn't happen for various reasons, but I'm, I'm glad you were here to answer our questions. Camika, you're a champ, it's like you've been here for two years already, you really, really know your stuff, it's very evident, you're very confident, and if there's something that we like, is confident women, and you are certainly one of them, so welcome, welcome. Tree People, with Cindy, Cindy, Councilmember Cindy Montanias, planted a tree in memory of my mom and dad, and happened to be a pine tree, and I did speak to this at a special niece class, that, class that I was invited to speak at in San Fernando High School, and the students were just wondering. And the students were just wonderful, eleventh graders and twelfth graders. There were six students. And I invited, uh, Councilmember, uh, Montanis to join me and, uh, she graciously, uh, she had other commitments and sent two staff members. And wow, did they impress the kids. They were just so excited because the letter they sent me had to do with climate change, had to do with a tree canopy. And who better to speak to that issue than, um, a tree people? And I'm just so grateful that, uh, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Montanis. And they did such a great job. And the kids loved them and they were just so excited. And when a bus was offered to the kids, I'm saying kids, but you know, to me, they're kids and they're high schoolers. And, uh, the bus was offered and the, uh, a, a trip to, uh, I guess your headquarters, right, Councilmember Montanis? And two of them just fist bumped each other and they were so excited. And that's the best thing about our special, uh, community is they show how they really feel, how they sincerely feel. So they were, it was just a great day. It was a great, uh, forty, fifty minutes with them. And, uh, so I want to thank you for sending just the top-notch people. And, you know, of course, she sent the youth coordinator. Boy, but we need the youth coordinator. So that was great. Uh, the other thing I want to talk about, the tree that was planted in memory of my mom and dad and Councilmember Montanis did not know this. But my, it was a pine tree and my dad was raised in Lone Pine. And my mom's favorite tree was a pine tree. And she really loved pine nuts. So that all of my cousins, when they, if they, some of them truckers, if they trucked to New Mexico or somewhere and they happened to be in season, they always brought her a bag of pine nuts. So it's just so appropriate. And my sisters came over today, by the way, to look at the tree. And they, we were, the three of us were in tears, okay? By the way, we were in tears, but I just wanted to say that. Thank you so much. That's, that's, that's my comments. Thank you, thank you. And I want to thank staff because this was not easy. This was a very challenging, uh, process. But I think, uh, we all, we're all benefiting from, from this plan. We're all learning a lot and we want the best for our city. And I'm sure you all know that. So again, thank you, Councilmember Montanis.
Well, Madam Mayor, if I could just say, um, you know, and our, our dear, you know, former mayor, um, Ballen, like, that, that makes me have tears. I just want to hug you right now, um, to know that, how special that tree, um, and what it meant for your parents and the family and Lone Pine and that connection, which I didn't know. Um, thank you for allowing us to do that, you know, because of, you know, what your parents, like the legacy that I've said, and we all know that they left through you and your family. They could spend, have remained in San Fernando. And so I want people to, you especially your family, but like just the community to know, like how wonderful your parents are and, and everything that they, that they've done. And, and for us to remember them through that legacy of a tree, especially that pine tree. Um, you know, thank you for allowing us to, to do that for you. And we, we send it to you with so much love and respect and forever remembering your, 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 your dear parents. Um, and again, thank you for bringing them into our lives and sharing them with us. So it was, uh, you're welcome. And we did it with a lot of love.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor Pacheco?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for sharing those stories. I mean, uh, it's nice to be reminded about people's humanity, that, uh, we have family and friends and not everything is so, you know, contentious and political. Um, I wish we could start and end every meeting like that. Uh, I think it's really special and, uh, thank you, uh, to my council colleagues for being an inspiration in that way. I, I know I need it in my life. So. Uh, thanks to staff, uh, for productive meeting. I encourage whoever is still listening to remain engaged on this housing element issue. Um, nothing could be more important to the, uh, look and texture of our community. Um, so thanks again and, uh, have a great night.
And I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Kane, uh, for your presentation and your time and answering our questions. And Kamika, you know, you were just great. Uh, you helped me through this in reading the entire document with, you know, and, and answering my questions. I, I had, uh, ten times as many more questions that I had presented to, you know, I asked today, but thank you so much. And, and Nick for your support as well. Um, and, you know, we hadn't met, so I just want to make sure I wish everyone a happy new year and that everyone's holidays were, were safe and happy and surrounded with family. Also, um, we also got a request from Maritza Duarte from the, uh, senior club. She put in a request for seven hundred dollars and I was just wanted to let you all know, if we all gave a hundred and fifty dollars, we could ma- meet her request of, uh, for the seniors. Uh, they, they wanted for the Mother's Day event and many of the seniors, uh, you know, the women don't pay on Mother's Day for the dance, dinner dance. And this will cover some of their meals. Um, some of them are widowed or don't, are not married, they're single and, and, you know, could use a, a little hand there. They don't have a spouse to pay for their, or, or date to pay for their, their, their ticket to the dance. So, uh, you know, if you could let, uh, Julie know and then, uh, you know, we'll see how much more is needed to complete her request. And, um, also the library commission?
Count me in.
Thank you.
Yeah, count me in. I'll send, uh, Julie an email. So Julie, if you're listening, come in.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, for telling us.
And, um, I'm, I'm on the library commission as well. And they sent us a notice that they would only be opening at forty hours a week. And, um, uh, we, we want to see if we, uh, this council is in agreement, uh, to send the, a letter to the supervisor, uh, to bring them, bring the hours back to pre-pandemic hours. They sent us a new, uh, hours model on, on reducing those hours. So if council is okay with that. Mr. Kimball, did you want to add anything?
Uh, no, I just wanted to make sure unless, uh, we, we just wanted to, um, be able to, from a staff standpoint, submit a letter, uh, requesting that the, instead of forty hours a week, that it's open to pre-pandemic levels, uh, you know, to, so that we don't continue to fall behind in our, you know, underserved community. So, uh, unless any council members have, uh, we, we can either agendize it and bring it back at the next council meeting and, and, and get, um, council to all sign off, um, which could, would be easy to do. Um, or we can just get, you know, we can just send it and send a copy to each council member through email. So it might be more efficient to just draft it in email, um, and then we can get out quicker.
Yeah. Is that okay with everyone?
As long as you're okay with Brown Act. I don't know if you have to notice the discussion or anything, but if not, we're good.
Yeah, no, as long as, I, I mean, I can just send it out to all council members and get feedback independently.
Thank you.
Should be fine.
Thank you, Richard. And also we, you know, um, in December, on December thirtieth, we had the opportunity to attend Chief Arrow's End of Watch Broadcast, which was a very nice, touching, uh, very special event. As wise was there. Uh, many of the police officers were there and staff and it was just very, very nice. It was my first experience with something like that. It was very much appreciated. Uh, and the tree, and the planting of the trees, that was another great event. Uh, Councilmember Ballen and, uh, Councilmember Rodriguez with her husband and her little girl were there. And they, they, you know, it was a really nice event. And, uh, thank you for bringing that opportunity to Tree People and the NFL for sponsoring that event. And I think that's all I have. And if there's no further comments, the meeting is adjourned.